Sounds suspiciously like a church in here, doesn't it? It's just kind of like everybody's waiting for the thing to start here.
I'm definitely waiting for you to start.
I know. You know, we used to just be able to sit down and just start talking, but it's like, no, you've got to get the computer set up and make sure the agenda packet is where it belongs, so if you need to refer to it, you can find it. Okay, we ready on the left?
We are ready over here.
Ready on the right? Medfield TV, we're ready? See, it wasn't me. All right.
Go for it, thumbs up.
Thumbs up, we're good. Okay, let's see. Welcome to the December 20th Medfield Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Board of Selectmen will attend in person, and members of the public may attend in person, and we have several people here in the audience tonight. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining using one of the following options. The thing to do is to go on the town website, open up the agenda for the Board of Selectmen meetings. There is a Zoom link there that you can use to log in to join our meeting that way.
Accept your panels.
Excuse me. My computer's talking to me, give me a second.
It's annoying to lose that window of opportunity.
There we go. Yeah, no, thank you. It's a good thing we have like eight sets of eyes watching the things that happen here. So now that I do have my little thing, I will turn my video on. At some point here, I will appear.
I'll change my background soon to see what that is.
There we go. Let's see what my background is.
That's my work one, I like that.
Okay, that's good, good angle.
They'll throw you a single remote.
Two flags in the back, all right. Just for those people who are here tonight, this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast by Medfield TV. If any of you are going to speak or wish to speak, the preferred microphone for you to use is the one up at the podium, based on feedback we've had from people in town who are tuning in by Zoom to listen to the meetings. But if you, for whatever reason, either just have short comments or just don't want to have to go up there, we should have the designated Bill Masaro microphone here. It's normally always right next to Bill. Do we?
I'm sensing it's not right now.
Maybe it's not. Is there no Bill Masaro microphone?
I've been muzzled.
No, 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 not before the new year, that's not going to happen.
Check the battery on that microphone. At any rate, so if you do use the microphones, it doesn't amplify your voice here in the room, it's only the audio feed going out through Medfield TV, so don't feel like it's not working just because you don't hear a loud booming voice coming out when you start talking. Okay. Let's see, the very first item, excuse me, the very first item we have is to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe. Thank you. Okay. And then our first appointment is Council on Aging update by Roberta Lynch, the COA Director, soon to be the former COA Director as she embarks on an impending retirement at the end of the year. So welcome, Roberta.
Look at that smile.
I have some, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Perfect.
I have an extra one, anybody want?
Sure. Thank you. I can show everyone.
Okay, nice to be here again. So I just want to say that the current mood and feeling at the center is quite good, of course, with the holidays and everything. And it really is going to be a smooth transfer of duties and responsibilities with myself passing this on to Sarah Hanifin, as obviously you know, she will be the Director when I leave. She's delightful, and I know that the COA, the center, will be in good hands. I have to say before I, oh, here goes, I feel very fortunate to have had the best job in the world, truly. It's amazing, working with so many wonderful people and enjoying every day, beginning in 2001 at the FAF Center and 2008 in this beautiful building that I've been in. So it's just amazing. So now I'll get that out of the way. All right, so our current staff, for some of you, we've had some, a lot of transition. Obviously, Sarah Hanifin going from volunteer coordinator to Director. Susan Longmore is our outreach coordinator. Peter Burke is transportation and building support. Diane Croto is the club coordinator, the respite program. Ann Hunter is club activities. Jennifer Dougherty works Saturdays, and Anne Marie Giscus is a Saturday substitute. And this is a plug, we are actively looking for a Saturday position, either every Saturday or every other Saturday, hours at 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. If anyone is interested, please give the center a call. It really is a, it's a great part-time job, it's a lot of fun, and the people are wonderful. So for this update, I've pulled a few statistics off our software program, which you have in front of you, which shows a steady stream of activity at the center. These numbers, I have to say, are only as good as those who scan in. They have the little CVS card, and they have to scan in when they enter, and despite reminders, a lot of people come in, they rush in, and they don't scan in. So just understand that this is the best data that we have from that. So the first page shows that our total number of active people in 2019 was, I'm going pre-pandemic to where we are now, just so you can have some comparison. So in 2019, we had 1,064 participants. Let me get my page here. And in 2022, we have, hold on. I'm sorry, bear with me one second. Okay, yep. So in 2019, we had 1,064, and 2022, we have 1,136. So that's a little over five, a six and a half percent increase. We have a larger increase in in-town participation, which is great. It went from 721 to 834.
Roberta, are you on a particular page in the material?
Yep, that's the first, the first page you have.
First page, okay, thank you.
Yep. Flip over to the second page. The second page shows our average monthly and daily participation. These numbers are lower than 2019, but these are good numbers considering the continued presence of COVID, the flu now, and RSV. And we hear about that almost every day in the news. The third page shows a general summary of activity, volunteers, and services that we provide, with an unduplicated number of 1,136 in 2022, for over 20,554 visits to the center. So we're very active. We have a lot of people coming in every day for programs, activities, and, you know, individual need assistance.
So that's saying, on average, people probably show up at the center 20, on average, 20 times a year. That's more than once a month, for sure.
Oh my God, we have people that come in four times a week.
Right.
Yeah. And the fourth page details all our exercise programs. We have quite a few exercise programs, I think 11 actually, 11 or 12. And we have 300 people that are participating in our exercise programs, and, which is great. I mean, exercise as we age is so important. So we're very busy, and I'm, and you know, it's not, it, the numbers aren't the same as pre-pandemic, but I think it's going to take a while to get there, but I'm very, very happy with where we are now. It's, we're doing quite well. So I want to talk about our equipment shed, which is not always organized, it's to the left of the building, and it's filled with so much equipment. And so far this year, we've loaned out 191 pieces of medical equipment.
Wow.
And it just keeps on, it just keeps on going out and coming back. Transportation, we have two forms of transportation. We have our medical ride, volunteer, volunteer medical transportation. We have volunteers who drive people to doctor's appointments, and we have provided 137 round-trip rides this year so far. And we also have our transportation by our three vehicles, and we have 33 individuals in town who depend on our transportation with our vehicles for basically all their needs, their shopping, coming to the center, doctor's appointments, et cetera. We have our Wednesday bread distribution, every Wednesday, which is kind of amazing because we just, we have so much bread and bagels and donuts and all that good stuff, and we serve about 80 individuals coming in for the bread products. The Saturday program continues to address the weekend social isolation. I actually went last, this past Saturday, and played bingo, just as a participant, and it was actually a lot of fun. We have about 40 people that come in on Saturdays, because we have Zumba at 9:00 a.m., and that's open to everyone, line dancing at 10:30, we play ping pong, we have open space for anyone who wants to come in and play cards, to get out of their house and play cards, and we have lunch and bingo. So it's a very successful program. But I do need an extra staff person, so if you're out there, give a call. And then we have our wonderful club program, which has been running since 2012, and it continues to serve families and provide respite services on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 11:30 to 3:00 p.m. You may have already seen the letter from a Medfield resident, but I did include it with your paperwork there, so you could look at it again and just refresh your memory how wonderful this program is.
That was a wonderful letter from Caroline.
It was a great letter, yeah.
It was so complimentary and just so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should feel very good.
Oh, that is just, that is my baby, and they know that has to keep going, so. So I do want to say that when the club started, it was a longer day, it was from 9:00 to 3:00. And then when we closed with the pandemic, you know, we did online type of respite care, but that was okay, didn't, it was okay. That's all I can say about that. But when we reopened on May 18th, 2021, we reduced the hours from six hours to three and a half hours, so now it's 11:30 to 3:00. And our in-town folks pay $40, our out-of-town guests pay $55. We have, right now, we have five participants from Medfield, and we have seven from out-of-town. And my plan, and I'm talking to Sarah about this, or her plan hopefully, will be to add one hour to the program and have it run from 10, start at 10, rather, 10:30 rather than 11:30, just to give that one extra hour, because three and a half hours, by the time you drop off your loved one, you go someplace, sit down, it's, it's good, they love it, but an hour would be a little bit better. So I only did the past five months of revenue for this program from July, and we took in $20,080, $20,080, and our expenses were $18,558. So it's covering the salaries, it's covering their activities. Diane's very creative, and they love the crafts that she's been doing with them, and it's just, it's just, we've had music every Thursday for the month of November and December, which is, they, you know, people love music, everybody loves music. So it's, that's wonderful. We are waiting, I worked with Brittany over the summer, and we're waiting to hear on two Department of Transportation vehicle grants. We wrote for, replace two of our older vehicles, the 2008 eight-passenger and the 2013 14-passenger diesel, which Javier at DPW says it's probably, that would be the one he'd most likely get rid of. So we did write for those two. We're hoping to hear a positive response. We want to replace, like I said, we want, so we're looking for a 14-passenger gas vehicle with a lift, handicap lift, and a seven-passenger minivan with a lift, because we have a lot of people, we have people now who live in some of the more narrow streets, like Pine Street, and our bigger buses, it's very challenging to, it's just challenging to maneuver in and out of people's driveways. So a minivan, when you're going to pick up one or two people, would be absolutely ideal. And of course, the lift for anyone who needs that would be perfect. And just a statement from Department of Transportation, our vehicles, because they are so old, they have reached their life expectancy, and replacement is warranted. So that's my summary of this, the COA, and I'm happy to be here and share that little bit of information with you.
Roberta?
Well, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you so much for your service. I've heard nothing but fabulous things this past year, being in Selectmen, but more importantly, just being around town these past 20 years, the comments, the references, as my mom and my dad's friends were using it before they left Medfield. It's like, you've just, you've, you've set the bar really high, and, you know, I think that's awesome. So just kudos to you.
Thank you.
I really wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
When you made some comments about people from out-of-town, are the people from out-of-town former residents that may be living in surrounding towns but come back?
Some are, yep, some are. Well, you know, we had that big wave of people that left for Norfolk.
Yes.
And so they do participate. But I have to say that seniors go, we have Medfield residents who go to Franklin all the time.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, they, I, I have a phrase I'll use, but I won't say, but they do, they go from center to center to center, depending upon what the activity is.
Okay.
You know, so if they, people like what we do, then they'll come here. But for me personally, well, I was, for me, like our big Lions Club Christmas party we just had, I didn't let out-of-town people go. It was only for Medfield, and that was just my decision. So some people's noses got out of joint, but, you know, if Medfield's going to give a party for their seniors, then it needs to be for their seniors, right? So, but yes, I call them senior center hoppers, they go from center to center to center, depending upon who has what going on, so.
And then the new garage, we're still going forward with that, is that a 2023?
It'd be in the capital plan for town meeting.
Mm-hmm. So the one concern, and, is that I think we'll, they'll probably have to do a re-survey or whatever it's called of the land, because the second piece of parcel of land that we gave away, it's really closer than I imagined it would be to where it is. And I don't know if the garage will fit, so I'm sure there's some type of zoning, something that could happen, and, you know, so, yeah.
I'll send you a postcard.
You'll make it work. Perfect.
So the issue is setback, not literally you had to put a building out, somebody else property. Unless you went to a bigger garage, then perhaps.
No, no, it's the same garage we've always been looking at. I can show you, the plans are in the office.
No, other than that, I think it's fantastic, as I said, I just, and I love looking at, when you look at the, the age from the people that attended in 2019 to the people that in 2022, you can tell some of them age, they've gone from their mid-70s to later 70s, but you have a very loyal following.
Yes, and did you see, I mean, it's amazing that our largest group of participants is 85 and older.
Love that.
It's amazing, yeah.
Something on water in Medfield, I'm telling you.
Right? Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it's just been a pleasure to see what you've done there at the Council on Aging. I want to thank you. I know that the people that go there are so appreciative of you, they remark on the fact that you know everybody's name, and they just feel so welcome there, and so that you've done a wonderful job. I know that you fought really hard to get the respite program going, and that's been such a huge success, and Caroline's letter clearly shows how important it is to the families that use it, so.
Yeah, it's a great program.
Good luck in your next adventures.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you've done for the town of Medfield.
Roberta, I'd echo all the best wishes to you and retirement, for sure. You know, in my career, I've run across a couple of people, I think I can count them on one hand, that I look at as people who somehow or another have put themselves into a job that, I think of them as purebred for the job that they're in, is the way I think of it, is that they're just sort of like people that are in a certain role, and it's independent of pay and all that kind of stuff, it's just like personality that just clicks into a particular position that just seems like, for whatever reason, maybe, I don't know whether they're made for it or not, but they clearly care enough about the position that it's who they are, I guess is the way to put it. You're one of those five or less people that I can think of, that I consider that way. I have thought a heck of a lot of you ever since we were on the board committee discussing budgets in terms of your dedication, but I think more recently, as my mother, just several years back now, but when my mother and, actually, my mother-in-law, all at the same time, started to, you know, falter a little bit in their 80s, I had a chance to go down to the town south of here where my mother lived and talk to the COA there, and they were very nice, and they had good information, they told me exactly how to get meals on wheels and get those kinds of things set up. But what was in that town was not a tenth, probably not a hundredth of what we have here, and I think it's fair to say because of you. It may be somebody else's burden to carry it forward and keep it going, but up until now, I think it's really been because of you. And when I look at what the COA has been to people and how you've run it, and I think more generally about, so what is it about Medfield that, you know, everybody says Medfield's a great town, but if you ever go through the drill of trying to say, oh, exactly why, it takes some effort to do that, except that there are certain things that are easy to spot, and I think the COA is one of them. There's, maybe Franklin has as good a program, I don't know, I know when I get my monthly newsletter, and it appears to me you're running almost a full-blown food operation, just because of what the entire calendar's reading, and then on top of that, there's all the activities, and then beyond that, I think it's just the tone that's set, that says, no matter what age you are, there's things that you can do, there's things, there's people who care about you, the more active we can get you, the better off you're going to be, the happier you're going to be, the more contact you have with people, the healthier you're going to be. And all of those things have come through so consistently over all the years that I've known you, that you just have a, I have a deep admiration for what you've done and deep appreciation for what you've done for the town. So thank you and all the best.
Thank you.
I have one thing, I know you've already heard this, but because we're going out on Medfield TV, and the only place I saw it was a picture on Facebook where Sean Dooley and Denise Garlick presented a citation, I actually have the citation, and you've already heard it, but I want to read it, if that's okay, to get it out to the town. So this is a citation from the House of Representatives, "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Roberta Lynch in recognition of your retirement after over 21 years of commitment and dedication to older adults and their loved ones in Medfield by providing vital services, support, and friendship for the residents. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given the 16th day of December 2022 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts. By Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, offered by Denise Garlick and Sean Dooley, State Representatives." So that's in case people need some. And I'm pretty sure you get to keep this, yeah, so this, if you don't get it right, it's right there, whenever you want to take it, it's right there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roberta. Our second item is electric vehicle charging station cost discussion led by Hilly Passas of the Medfield Energy Committee and possible vote on cost proposal. Take it away, Hilly.
Thank you, good evening. I'm coming back here because, as you know, the town has installed three dual-head charges now, two at the schools and one here at Jane's Avenue parking lot. And in the previous meeting, the Board of Selectmen had indicated that they should be run to no additional net cost to the town, and that they should be on a similar rate schedule as the school charges. So we worked with the school department and the school committee, and they have approved a rate of 35 cents per kilowatt hour and a schedule that's appropriate for the schools. And I'm here to present you with a schedule and the same rate and ask you for a vote to approve as recommended.
Want to comment on what you're recommending for the town, or?
Well, it's.
We got it, so we read it.
Yeah, I don't know if, I don't know if you can pull it up, or do you want me to read it out, or the schedule? So the idea is, so typically, when, when there is a charge for, so, many of the meters that towns and businesses put in are not metered, but are, you know, free of charge. And since we want a charge, we have to meter it, and typically, you have a charging period followed by a grace period and then a parking fee. And it really is up to the hosts to, or, you know, the host community to decide how they want to do that, you know? Some communities have like a one or basic charge to even start the meter, and then a running charge per hour, per minute, or per capacity, you know, per kilowatt hour. So it's really hard to sort of say where we want to come in, but, you know, this is a rate that's sort of in the middle to, you know, middle range of where, what charges are out there right now. And the idea is that we would have a two-hour time limit during the day, followed by a 15-minute grace period, and then a $2 parking charge, and to allow overnight, continuous overnight charging between midnight and 7:00 a.m., so that if there are residents who really are in need of charging, they can come out and still use it. And that is mirrored by the, you know, the times are similar to what the schools have.
So in reading this through, the only thing I don't technically agree with is the overnight, is that if, I, and again, I won't comment to the schools, they can do what they want and what cars they may want left in their parking lot overnight, but I think if somebody happens to be, let's say, a nurse is coming in and they want to be able to, to, to charge their vehicle, I don't want to assume that someone who does a nine-to-five can just park it there overnight, when someone who can't come during the day is already blocked out, because someone may just be sitting there from 11:00 at night until 6:00 in the morning. So that would be my only thing, I just, and it's, I'm not like thinking, okay, now we're going to have parking tickets, but I think that should be the courtesy, that you're in, you're out, and let the next person come in, because these are town-owned, and if they're, if they don't choose to, then they get, what's it, like $2 a minute or some very high fee?
15 minutes, yeah. I mean, the thing is, there's, you know, six heads really throughout town, and I find it hard to believe that we have so many electric vehicle owners who can't charge anywhere else right now.
I just think it is, like, again, I don't care, if the school wants to do overnight, that's, that's two locations that can do whatever they want to do, but if we're talking about the town right over here, my own personal opinion would be, I would not be encouraging people leaving their cars overnight, but they keep the two-hour window, if they want to leave it there, do it, and then come back and get it out of there, just so you give the next person an opportunity. Because, you know, there are people that catch crazy early flights in the morning, so I just want to be respectful that, that we may be a little bit more of giving citizens a chance to come in and use it. Again, whatever the schools choose to do, they choose to do, the 35 cents, if, let me ask you, how, is that going to be app-driven, credit card-driven? Do we know how that's going to be collected?
That, yeah, that gets metered through, through flow, and they would kick it back to you.
Okay, so that's.
You'll pay with a credit card.
Yeah, you pay with, yeah, with an app or.
And then the town collects that payment, or how does that get back to the town? Okay. And there's no fee that will be reducing the 35 cents per hour? Okay.
No, so, so the way it works, we, we have a standard fee per head, which is $150 a year, and that needs to be covered somehow through the 35 cents, and then the rest is the electricity itself.
Okay. And also, I think.
And the, you know.
The software.
Yeah. No, the software is actually covered in, you know, the 150, well, we had a lot of discussions, and that's why we went with flow and not with charge point, because the base charge is so much lower.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other reason that I support making sure we get people in and out is, you know, get the, oh, I didn't know about the overcharge. It's like, okay, if it's two hours and you're done, it's two hours, it's done, we don't get the, oh, but I didn't know about that, and I just got a bill for whatever. If it's consistent, it's consistent, and you remove that element.
I mean, the, the two hours is, from what I understand, is really a top-up. For most people, it's not a full charge, because it's a Level 2. So if you really are dependent on getting a charge, I would think that two hours is not enough.
Okay. That's up to that user? Okay.
So in general, I'm fine with what you've done. I think I agree, as I hear Eileen suggest the overnight, making it the same as the day, that makes sense to me, and not having people just park their vehicles there all night, every night, sort of thing. I don't know enough about the times that it takes to charge that you were just referencing, so that, I don't know if two hours is the right number, but it's certainly not bad. I would assume we could, we could start with something. I would assume we could start with something like that, and if it turns out to not be right, we can kind of titrate it differently to let people get a full charge if that's what, if that's not enough time. So, I mean, I think that we're going to look at this for six months or something, and then revisit it and figure out if it's working well or not, so.
Exactly, yeah. I mean
First step.
So, we chose the two hours because we figured most activities in town take about that time. You know, there are some places that have three or four hours, depending on, you know, how quickly you want the turnaround. You know, we can look at this now or again later, if you want to change the length of the time that is available.
Yeah. I guess I would start with the two hours that you picked and then see how it works.
Agree. And if it's not working, we'll hear from the people that are using it, right? But let's start somewhere, and I think two is reasonable.
Yeah, yeah. And we're creating 12 positions per head per day, basically, with that thing.
Right. I, you know, I would, I don't know, I expect it not to be fully at capacity all the time.
So, actually, I have a question, and I apologize. Hilly, I think you and I talked about this a little while ago, and then I forgot to follow up on this. Are we going to post signage, electric vehicle charging?
Only.
Only, yeah.
It has to be.
And I think there should be permanent signage, you know, about no parking, electric vehicle charging only. And then the, this schedule would probably appear in the app that people have, or, you know, the
Okay.
Sorry, this information won't be on the sign. I would have thought it should have been on the sign.
I mean, we couldn't, I don't know how, you know
I'll have to talk to my sign guy in the back and see what we can get on there.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, if we, you know, this can be changed, you know, online, once we're online very quickly. So, if we make a sign, we don't want to change it all the time, so
QR code.
QR code or something, yeah.
Well, you know, the advantage of having a sign for something like this, I mean, I agree, we wouldn't change signs over and over and over again, but this is a six-month pilot. And if people know that they're going there to charge their car, then you can use a QR code or an app to tell them what the rules are. If somebody's just driving into town and they say, hey, they got chargers there, having a sign that lets them know what they're dealing with, just because they're there and they can read the sign, I think would actually help promote the usage of it. Maybe we don't do it forever, I don't know. I think that the idea of being consistent across town between the schools and the town is a good thing, because you don't want somebody to think they know how it works over at Dale, or at, I'm sorry, at Blake, and then suddenly they park here and it's a whole different region. So, I think that's a good reason not to do that. But I would think it might be useful, you know, even if the sign is, you know, pilot program, here's the rules. I just think it might help actually promote usage of it.
Yep. So, the other thing that occurs to me, Chris, is the fact that I don't know that we have parking tickets in Medfield, do we? How do we enforce the no parking there?
We will have to have the police give parking tickets, so we will have to
Do we have authority to get parking tickets, Mark?
If it's posted.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to have regulations in place, but yes, the short answer.
So, the Board of Selectmen can just draft regulations?
Right.
Okay.
People, pretty much everywhere else. I don't see non-EVs parking in, you know, the Whole Foods in Wellesley that's got the chargers right there up front. I would think that just by doesn't, it might have to do like they do in parking garages, where the spot is painted green or something, so that it's visually distinctive, but I
We can practice our new line painting machine.
I just
You have a machine, huh?
I'd just be surprised if that turned out, you know, scofflaws insisting on parking in the two EV charging spots.
Yeah, I mean, we can, again, we have six months to look at this, you know.
Exactly. So, look at it. If people are going to adhere to it, great. If people are going to be rude and selfish, well, then that's something else we have to deal with.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll keep an eye on it.
So, I want to just make sure I understand technically how this works. So, the charge is 35 cents a kilowatt hour. That's sort of just a meter of how much, you know, how much charging goes on with the battery. So, if somebody's there for two hours, they stay plugged in, they're going to start getting charged $2 an hour every 15 minutes for parking on top of the 35 cents. But there, you know, in other words, if you were there overnight and just said, I don't care, I'll pay the eight bucks an hour, I don't know why you would do that. But if you did, that you could get a full charge, but you would be charged for that full charge, plus the parking that goes. I just want to make sure that's how that's
I think that's the idea, yeah. And that would pay for your monthly fees.
So, strictly in the interest of our discussion here around the overnight, let me make a counterargument, not to argue totally, but just as a counterargument. And this came from having watched the MMA EV webinar that they just had this week. One argument for allowing people to park overnight and charge would be that people who do not have, they primarily would be living downtown, probably in apartments, don't have a charger. So, the idea that if you're in a built-up area where people are primarily in apartments, having a place that's publicly available charging spot for people who don't actually have an at-home charger is actually a good thing. It might be interesting, I don't know how many people that live in apartments in Medfield happen to have EVs, but it's possible that that actually would be helpful. So, that's point one. Not really trying to argue against what you're saying, I'm just making a counterargument for sake of our discussion. Point two, around letting people go overnight, is the other point that was made in this webinar, was that when you're thinking about trying to figure out, you know, the economics, obviously, we're hoping to recover the full cost of whatever it costs. But we don't know that's going to happen. And it's, we're not in big bucks for six months anyway. If it doesn't happen, that doesn't mean it's all a terrible thing. It just says the way this thing was set up, it did or didn't work. But one of the things that they said that I found interesting was that if you are, if you have charging stations, you basically want to put enough in so that you don't have more than 30% usage. Because if you have more than 30% usage, that means you're going to have queues of cars that want to charge that can't get in. So, I guess over the 24-hour day, it works out if they're used 30%, that's sort of, that's the optimum for collecting money. I guess that assumes what the kilowatt hour charge is. But that was the optimum for collecting money, to make it a worthwhile thing to do, to pay for itself. If you are higher than 30%, you probably don't have enough charging stations. If you're down at 15%, you're actually aren't, you're losing money on your chargers, which I just found that as an interesting rule of thumb there. That argument says, well, if you do have people that want to charge their cars overnight, that could help us get to that 15, that more than 15, less than 30% number. Now, that's for two chargers, it's a pilot, that doesn't matter a whole lot. But in terms of just thinking about, do we have a problem with people being there overnight? I would offer those two considerations. And I'm happy to do it either way, so I'm not arguing a position. I'm just throwing those two out as the arguments I wouldn't have known a week ago. But I listened to the webinar, it's like, okay, that's part I'm trying to do, is how to figure out about, how to even think about charging stations. And those are two arguments to go with, to see if there's anybody who actually wants to charge their car overnight. I still don't imagine people who can charge in their garage aren't going to go down to Jane's Avenue to put it there and walk back up to South Street or somewhere to their house. So, I don't, I don't think we get a lot of overnight abuse.
No, I think that you're capturing also the thought behind this schedule that we put out, because, you know, during the day, we want to encourage a two-hour turnover for people to do activities and shopping in the center of town. But then still have, cover that objective of making charging available for people who don't have the opportunity to have a garage or some charging at home.
So, to that point, can you, does the software actually tell you when people are charging?
Oh, yeah, I think
So, you can literally, you'll know what the true demand over a 24-hour cycle.
That's my understanding right now.
That's why I'd rather start without it. And, because then you could end up with, okay, we do it, and one person continues to take that every night, and there might be three or four people who want it. And it's like Russian, like they live in the back bay, like I gotta get that spot at a certain time or I'm screwed. So, it's like, I'd rather we get six months, let's see, we're going to be able to tell by the data who's using it. So, let's get that, and then we can expand upon what makes sense.
That would be, basically have a consistent rule of the day, same at night. So, there's no, the sign can be a small sign, doesn't have to be a big sign, branches, yeah.
Yeah. So, I've also been toying with the idea of having verbal feedback, you know, not just usage data. I don't know exactly how to go about how the town would solicit that. I have to ask if we can program that into the, you know, to the app and say comments, you know, email to, whatever.
I can guarantee you, if people don't like it, we'll hear all about it.
I was kind of thinking the same thing.
Just say.
Bill?
So, I was kind of thinking along the same lines, is part of what you'd really like to know is where the people live who are charging. And is that available in the software or anything else? I mean, that kind of says you have to know what their credit card says about their address and everything else.
I don't know that we, I really don't know if we'll have that.
Yeah, I don't, we're not going to have access to that.
But that's really what, if you think about what you need, how many charging stations do you need, what kind of use are you getting, what's the right hour limit, what's the overnight or anything else? Really depends on where the people are coming from, who are charging.
But, you know, I mean, I agree, you know, and because the other ones are sort of to the south of the town, you know, I would think that this is sort of more accessible to people to walk to some of the multifamily housing. So, you know, I still recommend going with the overnight, but obviously, this is your decision here.
I mean, I figure if there's going to be one, we lock, right? So, if there are neighbors that they want to leave it, they can do it down there. The other one is the high school.
Lake, yeah.
I just think in the downtown, it's just, I'd rather not do it the first six months, find out what's going on, and we can always go back.
Mm-hmm.
I know of three people with electric cars, electric vehicles in town. One is in our condo, and they installed a charger, was able to do that. Another is a two-family home, they installed their own charger. And another is a private home, they installed their own charger. I think most people in town, if they're purchasing an electric vehicle, are going to make sure that they can
Charge it.
Charge their own.
I think the argument is the reverse, you know, for people who don't have a home where there's charging available, does it hold them back from purchasing? Because there's no obvious way of getting a charge. So, that's, you know, why we suggested having an overnight charge available for some residents who would otherwise not purchase an electric vehicle would at least alleviate this problem.
There aren't enough apartments in the downtown, and each of those have a car, so that eventually those will be electric vehicles. And so that we want to start building this out for our population.
Well, I mean, the question then becomes, does a town build it out, or do we think about having multifamily homes, having extra charging?
Or, or do we, there's bigger issues, I think, on that, because we've been living with a system where the fueling for cars is handled by private enterprise. And right now, the state, and even we through this, are basically having government basically say, no, somehow or another, we think this time around, it's the responsibility for us to provide that infrastructure. Now, I don't have a problem with the pilot, but right now, if you really go through the full implications of what it would take to support an all-electric vehicle society, there are some important issues that haven't been figured out around just fundamental free enterprise, who, infrastructure, capital investments that are huge. And right now, in some ways, the government is getting involved in certain ways that, speaking personally, I think are actually going to prove to be counterproductive to getting us to a good solution. But at this point in time, we're doing pilots to learn about things, to see how people react to it. I think it's useful for us to get, to have that happen. And it's being done with a certain amount of subsidization from both the electric utilities and the federal government. So, it's, we're going to do experiments, I'd rather do them when they're somewhat subsidized by people who are trying to promote it, so.
I should also let you know, so there's a rate case in front of the regulators right now. So, right now, the all-electric vehicle charges are at the B2 rate, where part of the money you pay for the electricity is based on the capacity of the demand charge. And the rate case is asking for that demand charge to disappear and have a special rate only for electric vehicle charges, which would make, you know, pricing the usage much easier. But we don't know if that's going to go through or when. So, we may have another six-month study then.
So, I'm fine with asking to have a standard to, you know, keep the rules for the day the same as the evenings. You all right with that, Pete?
I am, yes. I think that's a good change.
I think we're good. Everything else, I think our intention was to try to track as closely as we could with the schools, so we don't create, every charging station has its own set of rules. If people understand how to use the stations at one place, maybe the time's a little different because of schools, and they should be able to figure that out.
Right, yeah.
Everything else, we're trying not to rock the boat. Is that good?
Do you need to take a vote on that, or was that it?
Okay. I would move to adopt the schedule that's in the materials, except that it be a day-long schedule instead of the two timeframes that are in the materials, and use the daytime rate.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries.
Can I just have a, can I just have a second vote to put up the signs for electric vehicles only, so that we have the authority?
I would move that we mark the spaces for EV charging as parking for electric vehicle charging only.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
You vote on the colors, or do we leave that up to?
I'm going to let Mo do it.
I think it's going to depend on what kind of paint Mo already has.
All right. Let's see, what's next? Next item on the agenda is update of ARPA funding and the spend, and spending claims.
Yes, Lunch, we have a brief presentation to give to you. Give us one second. I will tell you a funny story. I was having a conversation with a colleague in Brookline today, who is also presenting an ARPA spending plan today. And she got quite a chuckle, because some of her projects are larger than our total allocation for ARPA. So, yeah, it was a little
It's like Newton, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Does it work out per capita or not?
All right. So, I just want to give you a brief overview. We can go to the next one. So, I just, I know, Eileen, you weren't on the board when ARPA was passed, so I just want to go through the whole thing. So, as you know, it was signed into law on March 11th in 2021. It provides for $350 billion in additional funding for the town, oh, sorry, $350 billion for cities and towns. We are only getting the 3.7. And it was intended to help states and municipalities recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. So, here's our Medfield ARPA allocation. We had our direct allocation from U.S. Treasury of 1.3, and we had the Norfolk County reallocation at 2.4. We received two payments from the Treasury, and we are holding that $1.3 million currently. And then the Norfolk County reallocation, we have to apply through the county portal on a project-by-project basis. That money did not come to us directly. I have discussed at length over this past year how this limited the ways in which we can spend the money for ARPA. And I believe that's not how it was intended to be spent by small cities and towns like us. But it is what it is. This is the situation we're given, and I think we're trying to work the way, the best way around that. And the biggest problem with how we can spend that is determining the revenue replacement category. So, just to review eligible expenses, our revenue replacement, COVID-19 expenditures or negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, which you'll recall we did at the 2021 town meeting, and then investments in sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure. There are ineligible expenses. We are not allowed to use it for direct offsets for tax reductions or tax increases. We cannot deposit any of the ARPA funding into any of our pension funds. We cannot replenish our budget for our stabilization fund, our rainy day fund, or any reserve accounts. All of the funding must be obligated by the Board of Selectmen by December 31st of 2024, and expended by December of 2026. So, you have to obligate it and decide how you're going to spend it by the end of '24, and then it must be fully expended by 2026. Now, those dates might seem a ways off, but given some of our supply chain issues, we would like to get a commitment on the spending plan sooner rather than later.
So, I was mixed up. I thought that you could put towards pensions. All right, that's good.
Yep. Okay. And just before I go through exactly how you've spent to date in the Treasury funds, I just want to remind everybody, originally, when the funds were issued, the Board of Selectmen took the approach that these were unprecedented, one-time revenues, and should be used, similar to our financial policy, they should be used for one-time, non-recurring expenses such as capital expenditures. We did not want to use them for the operating budget. We did not want to obligate the town for personnel costs that would then be a recurring cost years after that. Our spending strategy at the time was to address our capital plan items, our critical infrastructure, our long-term assets, while also addressing any COVID-19 rapid recovery recommendations. And as I said earlier And as I said earlier, these mirrored our goals that we set out in the financial policy and updated last year. So to date, the direct funding we received from the US Treasury, we have spent a total of $614,313, and that includes funding for the fiscal year '22 capital plan, our first, half of our first year of the public health nurse, the COVID-19 stipends that I addressed that we spent at the '21 town meeting, contact tracing, the COVID requirements we had for the November '21 special town meeting, our interface mental health referral service, and COVID-19 tests for employees and residents.
So the special town meeting, how did that apply? Just because we had everything, we spread people out and all the different?
We had, we had so much that we had to spread out for that project, we were able to use that under revenue replacement as direct social distancing for COVID. So when you can use it under the revenue replacement category, and that's the issue between the direct allocation and the non-direct allocation, you can spend within that revenue replacement category without having a subcategory.
Okay.
But for us, we felt it was eligible under revenue replacement based on all of the COVID precautions we had to take.
Okay.
Christine, this, this is $614,000 out of the $1.3 million that came to us directly.
Correct.
And part of, this is 45% of the allocation, but our plan was basically to use that $1.3 million over a two-year period.
Correct.
So it's got, in essence, we sort of spent the first year right on track with about 50% of what we were, with a 5% hedge, I guess, to...
Yes, we weren't, we weren't sure what would be coming down the way, so we wanted to wait till we got the second allocation and start to begin that second process. And you will notice, actually, if you can flip to the next one, you will notice these are the recommendations I'm making tonight for how to spend the remainder of that funding. You will see we did the fiscal year '22 capital plan, the fiscal year '25 capital plan, '24 and '25. We did not appropriate anything for fiscal year '23, and that is because at the time of last year's town meeting, we were still having those discussions/arguments with Norfolk County, how we could spend that money. And we did not want to commit any of those funds to the fiscal year '23 capital plan until that was, that was made clear to us what we were going to do. So for proposed for, for this next amount, we're recommending $350,000 for the fiscal year '24 capital plan, $350,000 for the fiscal year '25. I don't know anybody who has gone to vote in person, who has spent any time at the election, but our voting booths are in very poor condition. They are non-ADA compliant, and I have witnessed the fire department take several people out who have leaned on them.
Oh, jeez.
And they've collapsed. So we were working with the town clerk, and she would very much like to update those voting booths, which I believe we've had since about 1954, so.
What our money's worth.
And then the last project I have on this list is the AED project. You will remember that this was a Board of Health-led project. The total cost of the project is 100, just about $100,000, and this will bring AEDs to all our sports fields and hardwire them into the fire department. We were very lucky this year that we received, both from the delegation from the Senate and the House, $75,000 for that project. However, we did find we had a $25,000 shortfall, and I would recommend that you use $25,000 from the ARPA funding to complete that project so we can begin next year. So that would leave the total remaining from the direct allocation from the Treasury at $6,668. Okay.
So a question from Kathy McDonald.
Oh. Let's see. Oh, Kathy, you're ahead of me one slide. Hold on one second. I love when my staff's watching this. And then our committed Norfolk County funds. So we separated this out. I know a lot of towns, when you see them, and you've been to our other websites, ours is going to launch later this evening, when you see their ARPA websites, they don't divide this between what they receive direct and what they receive from the county. Because we have different spending models, we have broken that up for you. Actually, you can go back, one more. There you go. So this is what you've committed to date out of the Norfolk County funds, this is what you have obligated, and that was the $6,000 that Kathy was mentioning that you did for Interface for this year. We have funded the PFAS study through DPW, and obviously the $250,000 for the Hinckley Playground improvements.
Those are all expenditures that we had to submit an application, Norfolk County?
Yes.
Norfolk County had to approve them.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we're still in the approval process. We're in a third reading for the Hinckley Playground improvements, so I have assured that we will get it, but we are definitely have to jump through some hoops to get to that point. Okay, and then proposed remainder for the Norfolk County. The first one is water and sewer infrastructure, and we have been meeting with the Board of Water and Sewer and with Mogale, our DPW director, to talk about some of the water and sewer infrastructure projects that need to be funded. So we are recommending $695,000 to come from the Norfolk County funds directly for water and sewer infrastructure. And several of these include items that are, we are now under consent order to complete for the wastewater treatment plant. And for those of you who have never been down to the wastewater treatment plant, it is a very critical infrastructure. I don't know if there's any more critical infrastructure that we have in town than the wastewater treatment plant. And actually, Water and Sewer is taking a tour on January 9th, if anybody's interested to go down and see those crucial
Oh, good.
Services, so. So the first part of this is water and sewer infrastructure, which is one of the categories available under the Norfolk County funds. Then the remainder for the Norfolk County funds that we're recommending this evening would be, we have an emergency DPW vehicle frame rail replacement. That needs to be fixed before this year's snow falls, which, you know, it's not going to snow really much that, Mo, but, you know, just in case. I have been working with Kathy McDonald on increasing the Medfield Outreach Fuel Assistance Program, and we're recommending a two-year program at $200,000. I'm recommending that you fund...
Does that mean two years of $200,000 each, or is it?
No, $200,000 total.
Over two years?
Over two years, yeah. And we would, depending on how this first year went, we would see how far we could go into, as long as we expended it before the 2026, but we anticipate $100 for both years. And then I'm recommending that you fund the BOSS Economic Vitality Fund. That is normally an article we put at town meeting for the $15,000 a year. We're recommending you fund that for three years with $45,000. We're recommending the next two years of the Interface Mental Health Services. I know that Kathy works very hard to get donations for that, and we would like to help take some of that off her plate and jumpstart that. We also anticipate that those costs, given some of the, some of the issues we're facing from mental health services for COVID, that those costs could exceed the $30,000, but at least gives her somewhere to start before her fundraising. We've also been working with the Land Use Department on a regional housing services position. This is a regional group we'd be working with MAPC on. This is a pilot project for a year. With the increase we've had in affordable housing, we really need somebody to assist us in making sure that both our residents are able to apply for housing, have some assistance when they go through the process of doing that. We've had some firsthand accounts from people about how difficult it's been. In addition, we need somebody to advise us on refinancing, sales of property, overall assist us with the affordable housing that we have in place.
What other towns are funding this person?
So right now, it's, it's six towns that are looking into it. Sarah has been looking at that. There was some concern that MAPC may not be able to get the program off the ground. If that case is, we would make that group smaller and go out with one or two towns on our own and do a regional housing services person.
Just as a side, Pete, I'm not sure, remember the regional selectmen meetings that were taking place before COVID?
Yep.
One of the, one of the meetings that I really recall is the discussion that came out with some of the other towns that were farther ahead than us at the time on their 40B projects, where because nobody was overseeing sort of the compliance with the requirements, people were actually going in, getting an affordable purchased unit, then going to a bank and refinancing, but not telling
Right.
The bank that it was an affordable unit, refinancing for the market value, getting the mortgage, leaving town. And the banks were, in fact, I think the banks are the ones that got left holding the bag on that
Yes.
Because the unit was actually an affordable unit. But they basically handed market rate money over to people who then walked away with the money. So this is serious stuff that you have to stay on top of to not get in trouble.
And then we are allowed a revenue replacement through Norfolk County. So where the direct allocation, we have up to $10 million we could spend, Norfolk County determined that within their 28 towns could only cap out for $10 million. So that, they are allowing us approximately $265,000 of revenue replacement. So we're recommending that you just hold that revenue replacement reserve at 209 as we get a little closer into '24, as to make sure there's no emergencies that happen that, that we wouldn't need that for. So we would hold that. So that brings you to a total of just over 1.2, which means the remaining Norfolk County allocation is $871,650. After meeting with Water and Sewer, if you go back, I'm sorry, it's not on the list. If you go back, we're talking about a full wastewater treatment facility assessment based on the consent orders and the surveys done by DEP and EPA. We're anticipating there'll be other projects that Water and Sewer Infrastructure has not planned on that may come out of that study. So I anticipate Water and Sewer may have some other suggestions of how you could spend the $871,000, in addition to some other projects they have on the capital plan that you may want to consider for that. I am actually very happy to report that we had several other projects...
Christine, just one quick thing. The deadlines that you went over for the direct funded, we're working off the same deadline?
Same deadlines, yep.
Okay.
At same deadlines. I am very happy to report that we had several other items on the Norfolk County project, and that was the Downtown Facade Program, the Downtown Wayfinding Program, and those came out of our Rapid Recovery COVID-19 Grants. They were actually just recently funded in the Economic Recovery Bill as earmarks from our delegation, so we were able to take them off of this list, which is great for us to continue to do our grant funding projects. So this is where we are now. If you funded everything this evening that we're recommending, it would leave you with the $878,000. I expect you're going to want to take some time. This is the first time you're seeing our full recommendations on the spending. However, I do have some several time-sensitive critical funding items that I'm looking for votes for this evening, and that is the DPW infrastructure projects from Norfolk County. We really need to get started on the work at the wastewater treatment plant in order to meet the deadlines for the consent order. The DPW vehicle frame repair. And we had numerous discussions last fall about the approval of ARPA for the special town meeting, including the addition, the additional purchase of the COVID test, but I do not have an official vote from the board on those expenditures. So I will need to, to get a formal vote on those as well, because they've been paid. So a little housekeeping issue on those two.
Okay. Questions, comments?
No, we talked earlier today. We've been, Chris and myself, not you guys.
Yes, just to clarify.
Just to clarify, I called earlier.
I wasn't saying, Pete, I meant, Pete, did you have any comments or questions?
Well, it's, I mean, it's interesting to see what the, what you've come up with, Chris, for spending, and it certainly makes sense to me, and I'm happy to go along with your recommendations on the DPW infrastructure and the vehicle issue tonight. I know that, well, yeah, it'll be interesting to try to figure out what to do with the rest of the money. $878,000 to figure out what to do with, so.
So the housekeeping, could you just review the housekeeping?
Sure, the housekeeping is a, is a vote on...
Do you want me to make the motion? I've got it here.
Yeah, I just want to give you, you want to give, you want the amounts.
The DPW vehicle and the infrastructure, that, I agree, that's sort of an easy one. I just wanted to be sure I knew what the chart, what the other expenses were that we were approving.
$60,465, which was paid for the, the special town meeting, and $2,523 for the COVID-19 test for the town.
Just those two things?
Those two were the housekeeping.
Yep, okay.
And then the other were the DPW vehicle frame replacement and the DPW infrastructure projects.
So Chris, did you need to vote on those two housekeeping ones then?
Yes, please.
As well, okay.
Yes, we will face an audit at the end of this in 2026, and they will require a formal vote, so I just want to
Sure.
Okay, makes sense.
Have that recorded.
So I would move that we approve the DPW infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant, the DPW vehicle rail repair, whatever that is. I don't seem to understand what that is, but I understand that we need it.
Mo is more than happy to describe this truck issue.
Thought he was getting into trains myself.
And then those two housekeeping things that you just listed that I don't, I don't have written down.
Special town meeting and the COVID test.
And the COVID testing.
We have a large ten-wheeler, we have a hookless, a hookless system on it that multiple departments use it, is one of our key vehicles that we use for snow and ice as well. So with that being down, the frame is cracked, and that it's too much of a safety issue to be using it anymore, so it needs to be replaced. It doesn't have a lot of hours on the, on the machine, so it's worthwhile, especially at the price that they, that called us. And as I said, it's one of the frontline vehicles that we use daily for our department.
So is the rail literally one of the beams on the frame, is what we're talking about?
Yeah, it's one of the rails on the frame itself, so the frame has to...
Got it, okay.
All right, second to that motion?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Perfect.
Okay.
And just, we'll have that, we have been planning an ARPA website, and I appreciate everybody's patience as we were navigating all of the different rules on spending, but we'll have that posted by the end of the week, so people can see what your commitments have been to date.
We need a glossary of acronyms, trying to track, including ARPA and Inflation Reduction Act and Rapid Recovery Act, and then there, I think there were some sustainability grants that came in at one point, and like, the good news is it's a lot of money, the bad news is I'm not sure that I have it all straight in my head exactly which buckets we have.
You hadn't, then, hold on.
Yeah, I don't like not having it straight in my head, but they were a little, it's one of those, well, it's all good. Okay, next item was townwide goals, and I think we were, we came out of our last discussion with actions to talk about, you know, what we might get by way of more, basically getting your inputs, but certainly putting a little more thought into the near-term goals. And then on top of that, Hilly reviewed Goal Area 6 and came in with some edits with her recommendation, so I think we want to talk about both those things. I'm going to, I'm not quite sure how we're going to compile our inputs to get to some sort of a revised ultimate goal, so I don't think we're voting on anything today
Right.
Because I think we're going to have to do a lot of integration, but I'm going to suggest maybe we work our way from the front to the back.
Agreed.
Just get comments from people as we work through. So Hilly, we just don't want you leaving yet, so kind of...
Yeah, I agree with that, so, because I, I looked over what was there in terms of what you had in red. Work with the town planner to identify parcels of land that could be rezoned as commercial. Present recommendations to the planning board, not done yet. I agree, that's not, that's not been done yet. And if we identify at least one parcel of land not town-owned, even if zoned residential, that could be commercially developed. You have, we have worked with the town planner slash planning board, and I just added "and neighbors" to evaluate potential, if it's actually going to be in a neighborhood with, that today may be zoned residential, that would be changing. Just want to make sure that that's an obvious and not something that's, something we assume we'll do. I, and then the other, number two, number three, oh, no, actually, number three, you later, I think it's in the third goal, you have gun range. I agree, taking it out of the first goal and putting it later.
Yep.
And then you asked, work with the downtown business community and residents to identify a committee to assume the responsibility previously held by the Downtown Study Committee and the Economic Development Committee with the goal of promoting economic development in the extended downtown area that would balance business needs and the needs of downtown residents. Do we still want to do this? I'm like, yes, without a doubt. If we're trying, if the goal of this is trying to promote business from the atmosphere and to retain, to retain and attract potential new businesses, I think working with who we have today, and I, I'm sure we've done surveys over the years, but I would love to know, what do residents want to see in the town? And I'm not being sarcastic when I say that, but do we need another pizza joint? Do we need another coffee shop? Like, what's missing that we could be recruiting as we look at vacancies pop up, whether it's along 27, whether it's along Main Street? I think a lot of that was done in the surveys when we began the Townwide Master Plan, so we can, we can send some of that information to you.
And how long ago was that?
Two years ago.
Couple of years ago.
So three, COVID, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Flies are, have fun.
Yeah. But I, we...
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I will, I'll have Sarah send that to you.
Okay, so that's just, on poll one, that's just my comments there. Okay, so that's just, on goal one, that's just my comments there.
So just for a second on that, we had two committees, I'm trying to remember now, I always forget, there was the Economic Development Committee and there was the Downtown Study Committee.
Downtown Study Committee.
I probably came into either Ward Committee or Board of Selectmen at a point in time where I didn't really know either committee very well, except that I think one of the committees effectively had just stopped doing anything, I think that might have been the downtown study committee. So what happened is we had sort of two economic development committees, one of which sort of, I think, evaporated, the other one of which wasn't doing a whole lot. They effectively both went away, but it's kind of like, it might be good if we had just one.
Mo, definitely.
Yeah.
I think we should have something that is focused on studying the downtown and how to, what improvements we want to make in the downtown.
Well, should that be set, so this is going down the path, I guess, of what we had. Is there a committee to study that, what should happen in the downtown that's separate from the town's economic development committee? Because it seems like whatever we do in the downtown should be part of what we might do more broadly for economic development, because otherwise we wind up with two committees just like we had, and I'm not sure that we'd get a different result.
Doesn't matter, I guess, which committee it is, it just, somebody should be looking at it. If the people on the economic development committee want to look at it and make sure the downtown is vital, that's fine, but somebody needs to be doing it, I think.
So that was, that was my thought, is that we want one committee.
I agree.
To tackle all of it.
And they'll run parallel with what Sarah's doing with planning, right? I know planning, she has a 10-year plan of what we want to do along 109, so.
Right, I would think that would be a committee that would be paying a lot of attention to that, and might be a committee that would be helping Sarah out and figuring out some of the new issues.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that one shows up there.
The one I didn't read, but just so that, you have, number two, rezone the business district in the downtown, provide more business retail spaces, find ways to extend the downtown business district to enhance areas like Park Street as integral components of the downtown business. So I think that is in process, right, so, okay. And then pursue reuse of the town landfill for solar energy generation, and that's in process as well, right? Okay.
So I guess, Chris, I would ask on that, number two, if that is in process, who's in doing that, basically? Is that the planning board, or who's looking at the downtown business district?
I think it's Sarah, myself, my staff. I think we're the ones who have been leading that, and mostly on Sarah.
Even the article for this year's Town War is to clean it up, so when we go to do this, it's a smoother read.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the first one there, identifying land that could be rezoned as commercial, I guess my question on that is, not many people in a residential neighborhood want the land next door to them rezoned commercial. I mean, nobody wants Treska going in next door to their home, and so I'm not sure of the benefit of that. I know that you think that we need more commercial for greater tax relief, Gus, but my argument is that if we build the right sort of housing, which is what Medfield residents want, is housing, they want to live here, that it can make more money for the town in terms of property taxes than commercial. The Medfield State Hospital reuse committee studied that with Lot Three, and they came up with greater revenue to the town from residential use on Lot Three than commercial use. So I, you know, just saying that it's commercial, I'm not sure that that gets us anywhere. I think that what we're looking for is property tax relief for the existing residents, if we can get it. I don't know that any one of us really wants a commercial facility in town specifically, so I guess I just question whether we want to do that or not. And the, and I have the same issue, I guess, with the second one, of rezoning a parcel of not town-owned land as commercial development. You know, again, most people don't want the lot next door to be a rock-crushing facility.
Well, commercial's not a rock-crushing facility.
Well, what's it going to be, an office building?
Probably be somewhere near where they, well, here's the part that I don't understand. On one hand, we're talking about economic development of the downtown, but we're then saying, but we don't want any commercial flexibility or any ability for commercial expansion, because we want to build more houses, or more residences, whatever they might be. And so it's like, we're sort of, either we're not interested in commercial development because we're not interested in diversifying the tax base, but that means that we're not really interested in changing the downtown, we just want this to be a bedroom community with housing.
So, I mean, our big chance to change the downtown disappeared when the Montrose School was, bought the property where it's located now. That property could have been a mixed-use development, but the town administration at that time refused to let that mixed-use development go in on what, land that was zoned for business. They wanted a business use there. Nobody wanted to cite a business use there, so we ended up with the Montrose School. Pretty fields, no tax revenue.
That's history, and I'm talking about the future.
So the future, we need to create, figure out a way to create a little bit more vibrant downtown by increasing the number, the amount of retail space that's available to the downtown area, and I think that we need to do that incrementally by looking at adding particular parcels to maybe change the zoning from residential to some sort of retail use.
So that's what, so.
Yeah, because how did Park Street?
Violent agreement here then, because this is a pretty incremental, this is only looking for one, this was not like, let's find a place for a massive, you know, commercial concrete operation. I think, if I remember right, when this first came up, Pete, I thought the context in terms of where people were thinking about it was the idea that Park Street would benefit from a more thoughtful approach toward promoting commercial activity on Park Street, given that that's half commercial as it is. So it's, that's, I think, when this first showed up, if I remember, that was the original conversation was around that. So I'm not really sure that we're disagreeing that much, actually.
I think it's going to depend on whatever parcel is picked. I mean, there may be some parcels that are very, lend themselves to this sort of reuse and change of use, and that might be fine, but, you know, other neighborhoods, the neighbors might object, and so I think that, as Eileen says, that we should be checking in with the neighbors about this as we do it. But, you know, this is a planning document at this point, so that, you know.
It should start conversation.
And if there's something that we can make sense and, don't rule it out, consider it, figure it out.
You know, if we have an action here, initially, this discussion sounded like maybe we didn't want the action there, but actually, given, I think, a more shared understanding of what the action actually represented, I don't think we have disagreed. Bill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, when I first read this, I read it the same way Pete initially started out with. I mean, it's broader than the second item, which narrows it down to the downtown area. So, I mean, again, if you just read the first one, you thought it was anywhere in town, residential property is available for commercial, and I think you'd have some problems with that. I agree with your comment about the neighbors, because obviously you have neighbors that are bugging the downtowns.
Right. Like, how did Park Street come about? I mean, you look at Park Street, are there, pardon my ignorance to this, are there any residential pieces of property as you go down? Because I think, when I use Park Street a lot, you've got, right, as you go around the bend, you've got Gazzy's Auto, which is fantastic, you've got the gentleman that has the upholstery right there at the corner. So from that corner all the way to where the bank is, is there actually residential-only spots, or technically is that entire street?
I think there is some residential.
Split.
Yeah.
Is it split?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's split on both, it's an odd configuration.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, because I look at, and I love Medfield Tire, so Doug, don't go anywhere, but like that, there's a chunk of land there that, like, at some point, will that?
I think we, my recollection is we actually did a rezon to assist them because they weren't permitted. So it was, it's lost, some of its residential character has kind of trended to other non-residential over a period of time, but originally it was largely residential and the zoning reflected there.
Okay.
And Route 27 is like that, too. I mean, Randy's gas station is in a residential zone, and it doesn't make a lot of sense at this point.
It's a commercial place, be, next door and behind you, too.
Yeah, yeah, they're advertising warehouse space, I saw the other day. So that, yeah, we should be looking at those sorts of changes in the downtown area is what I would do.
You know, to that point, too, if you just literally read these actions, it's like, let's go find a piece of land to rezone it to be commercial.
No.
And then let's figure out what we're going to do with it. Actually, that's the, that's putting the cart before the horse. What we, I think, should be doing, and I think we probably meant it when we wrote it, but didn't read it the same, write it the same way, right way, is what we're looking for is an opportunity for commercial development that perhaps needs some form of rezoning in order to enable it. So it's not a question of, let's just pick an arbitrary piece of land and rezone it and hope something good happens. It's more like, let's deliberately think about whether there's pieces of land that would be conducive to commercial development if we would only figure out a way to rezone it to enable that.
Right.
And that's, I think that should be the spirit.
I mean, I think today that all the commercial, most of the commercial activity in Medfield is taking place in people's homes, because people are working from home, basically, to a great extent in Medfield. I mean, I can remember when one of my soccer player's dads told me that his company refused to provide him office space, they didn't want to pay for an office for him, so he worked from home, and he was sort of the first person that I had bumped into that, so maybe that was, you know, 10, 15 years ago or something, but I think that's the model now, more than the exception.
It depends on the nature of the business, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
For retail, you're.
With the internet and your laptop, people are in business at their kitchen table, so.
Can I ask a question to Mark on this? So, Mark, if we were to potentially convert a piece of land from a residential property to a commercial property, can you put a lot of restrictions on that to give the surrounding neighbors a sense of, this is what it's being deeded for today, and these are the limits that would be put on it? So you wouldn't get something crazy next to you 10 years down the road when somebody maybe goes out of business or whatever?
That's a very, unfortunately, complicated question.
Okay.
Because the starting point is zoning has to be uniform, so you can't get into individualization in terms of the basic stuff.
And you're not allowed to do.
That's also one of the reasons that you use special permits a lot of times for a particular type of use.
Okay.
Because then, within the general permissible category, you can get more specific to a particular location.
Okay, that's good.
And you're not allowed to do spot zoning, so.
Yeah, but spot zoning isn't what most people think it is either. So as an example, like I said, I believe that we extended the zone to include the, since we don't allow use variances, my recollection was that we extended on Park Street to allow a commercial use on what would have been an unpermitted residential. So we've kind of made some inroads there, but it's a matter of taking really a comprehensive look from a planning standpoint of what's there. For instance, going up North Street, my recollection is that the zones don't go back to property lines necessarily, they go in a certain number of feet from the street, which was the old-fashioned way of doing it.
Okay.
And that's created some potential problems. I know there were issues at the time that now Rockland trusts, but at that time, Ben Franklin relocated to that location, they replaced what had been a multifamily, small apartment house.
Yep.
And there were issues on zoning at that time. So it's kind of looking, it's zeroing in on particular areas of town and really going lot to lot and trying to minimize unintended consequences.
Okay, thank you.
So on the number two here, I would just assign that to this committee that's going to be studying the downtown. On number three, the gun range, I don't see that as a real high priority on my thinking. I think that's mainly an issue for Trinity to deal with.
Oh, it's a big, it's a big issue for us, because if Trinity can't deal with it, that whole project goes away, and we're sitting on a, that's a huge issue, but it probably doesn't go here.
Right, you have it on, I think, goal number three, if I'm not mistaken.
Don't underestimate how important that gun range is.
Yeah, I, you know, as somebody that listens to the guns all the time at my house, because I'm that close to it, I don't find it that big an issue, but.
The banks will.
It's a deal breaker for Trinity.
I've heard them say that, but I bet it isn't.
I wouldn't really make that bet.
Yeah, from listening to other banks.
We want to work with them, but as I say, it's not high on my priority list.
It doesn't belong on goal one, for sure.
Right, I think goal three makes more sense.
I'm not looking to spend a lot of town money on ameliorating the gun range, I'll put it that way. On number four, which is the landfill and solar generation, I absolutely think that we need to be doing that, and I would like to add sort of a timeframe to do that, so that we push that forward. My understanding from talking to Penny Connors from EverSource is that these, that it's, there's less money in generating solar as time goes on, so that we want to get in the queue faster and sooner to develop the landfill. So I would just have that be something that we would push forward.
Well, it's the state, the state has to clear it. It's not, we're not in control, we're not in control of our destiny.
We're in control, because what we have to do is we have to hire an engineer to go out and examine it and report to DEP, I think, and so that.
It's a little more complicated than that in terms of the closure. There's going to probably be some work that has to be done in order to finalize the closure.
Yeah, all right, so there's some expense then involved, too.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Basic point, this is here, we would like to do it as soon as we could. I think, I think you and I both thought this was something that was going to happen years ago, but my only point was, it's not, we can't put a strict deadline on something when it's the state that's making.
Oh, no, no, I would just, you know, I would prioritize it, that's all.
Yep.
And it has to, you know, we have to spend some money on it, and so that, we need to be willing to allocate some money to get it moving. And those were my thoughts on this first page.
So I have one.
Oh, I had one more, I'm sorry, at the very bottom.
Yep.
In terms of the downtown, my idea is that we should try to create an indoor space in the downtown for the, because of the fact that we have winter so much of the year here in New England. So I have this idea in my head that we create a huge greenhouse area, maybe enclose the whole area over the gazebo and that green area in a greenhouse, so that there's a space where people can actually get outside in the winter and.
Then take it down in the summer?
No, I just leave it up all year long.
Oh, but then you can't use the gazebo, you can't sit out there and just relax and grab a bite during the summer, which it gets used so much.
Well, you could still use it, yeah.
But you'd be inside.
Yeah, you know, you'd have, you know, it's a greenhouse, you have the walls or whatever, but you look through. It's different, yes, it would be different. But, you know, somewhere, I think that it would be nice to have that sort of indoor space that people could use, it would give the kids a place to go, to be. I mean, that's what the kids want to do, they want to get together with the other kids, so it would create that sort of a space for them. So those are my comments on the first page.
So I have to ball that one over, Pete. Quick thought is, what I'm looking for is the right words to capture what you're trying to accomplish without necessarily having it just show up as a greenhouse over the gazebo in between the library and the, and Zulo Gallery.
The soon-to-be-named gazebo park.
Yeah, if the, what you're looking for is a place that it would be more comfortable for people to go in the wintertime, in the downtown area somewhere, that, is it, as opposed to simply going in a building that's heated, you're talking about something that sort of feels like you're sort of outside, in a more comfortable environment, is what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know exactly what that would be in terms of just thinking about it, but at least just to capture the idea, is there something we could do? Yes?
I'd just like to suggest the word, a conservatory, it's a very old-fashioned glass house or something like that. If you think about the space that Dana Farmer built, their huge greenhouse at the top of the building, it's a very therapeutic healing green space, people go there all the time, and, you know, conservatory sort of is an old-fashioned term, and in the summer, you open up slightly greenhouse. It's a charming idea to think about creatively, but the gazebo conservatory.
There's a very nice greenhouse at the Tangerini Farm in Millis, it's just, it's a very big one, it's not big enough for my thinking, but it's getting there. And they're not that expensive. I mean, I was looking at them online, for $100,000, you can buy a monstrously big greenhouse, so.
Well, so noted.
I mean, you could even look at, like, behind, like, near Baxter Pond, right? Somewhere where now you've got water, and if you're going to take in spot, that's closer to some of the schools, so.
So I got one, this is a curveball, consistent with my normal position of being somewhat of an attack dog on the cost of taxpayers. Right now, we have. of an attack dog on the cost of taxpayers. Right now, we have a school project that failed last fall, and we know that it's a school project that's going to be coming up. I, at this point, will not hazard a guess when, except that when it does, it will be a significant addition to the, to the town tax, the average tax that people pay. A few years ago, when people talked about why they moved, when they were arguing for schools, but they talked about why they moved to Medfield, they said, "We moved to Medfield because Medfield has a top-tier school system, but it wasn't as expensive as other towns in the area that have top-tier school systems." And therefore, Medfield was an economically competitive town for people to move to who wanted to get a good education for their kids. I'll submit that we are no longer distinctive in that way. We're not maybe worse than some of the most expensive towns, but we're not better.
Totally agree.
And so we've lost that economic advantage that we had to attract people to this town, even as we delivered a strong school system. Somewhere in the next five years, I'm not sure if that makes me an optimist or pessimist, but let's say five years, we're going to undertake a school project that presumably is going to add somewhere between $500 and $1,000 to the average tax bill that people in this town pay. I have a hard time envisioning how it will be less than a $500 impact on that, on that average tax bill. Right now, we are paying down debt, and we are benefiting from several years of federal funding for the various things we just talked about, ARPA, that effectively are going to give us some advantages around our capital spending. It's good that it's coming, we're putting into, into permanent improvements. We have managed our finances over the years when we budget to kind of try not to trip Prop Two and a Half limits. And we've used Prop Two and a Half as the floor that we shoot for, effectively. We, you know, any given year, we could be a little bit upper, upper or down from that. Basically, Prop Two and a Half limit becomes the floor for our budget, and then we, we hope that we don't have to pass over it. There are other towns that actually have a buffer between where their budgets actually are and the Prop Two and a Half limits. I'm thinking that in the next several years, we should actually be targeting budgets that are below the Prop Two and a Half limit with a goal of building up that kind of a buffer so that when that school project hits, it's going to be whatever it is, but we can go to the town and say, "Listen, we've worked to actually not have your taxes go up, you know, to the maximum that we can without triggering an override. We actually want to try to manage our budgets to hold back on that." And you, you got to do that, you can't do it all in one fell swoop. You have to do it with discipline over three, four, or five years that it's going to take between now and the, and the budget. I would put that kind of a goal here.
I love that.
And here, with the financial side, for what we're shooting for. But that's why I'm doing it. I'm not just arbitrarily doing it. I'm worried about what the impact of a school project is going to be at whatever point in some foreseeable future we actually wind up hitting it. So...
I, I love that, yep.
Okay.
I think that's an interesting goal. I mean, the question then becomes, when the tire meets the pavement, which jobs are you cutting?
Yep.
Because we're all salary. Our budget is all salary, so you're, you're cutting people.
Well, that's not...
And you're cutting services. And so which services do you not want? So...
Yep.
But I would question, like, if you look at just the tax bills over the last couple of years, home values are going up. Sun rises, sun sets, and your home just suddenly goes up 50,000, 100,000. You haven't even put a nail to the wall and done anything better. We're getting more money from that from the town, and we shouldn't just automatically find a way to spend it. So if I think of what you're doing, if we look at the next few years, if home prices don't tank and they continue to just go up, like the last couple of years have been crazy in Medfield, we're, we're collecting.
No.
No.
Nope.
No.
The tax rate commences to go down.
That was the presentation that Yvonne made.
Oh, right, 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 my bad.
Yeah, okay.
You're basically locked in from Prop Two and a Half on the tax levy.
Okay.
As it was then, and it's only new growth plus the two and a half percent.
That's right, that's right.
It's allowed.
Okay.
So it's kind of that, that seesaw effect that we are, we are taxing what our total budget is.
Somebody put an addition on their house that did something to actually improve the value, then you capture that.
That's what she was saying, that's right, yeah. I still like your idea. Trying to find it.
If you're, if that would work, if that would work, I'd have no budget issues.
Right. Well, okay, I'll put that in there as a, as a draft, and we can figure, because you kind of have to operationalize that, but I wasn't sure whether I'd get total pushback or partial feedback. Goal two area?
Okay, so, goal two, all right, so whoops, oh, I just lost that shoot. Proactively plan for the maintenance and upgrade of town buildings. So you have in here, develop a plan to fund those building improvements, deem necessary and appropriate refunding for 20 years. You ask if that's complete, is that?
I think, I think what I was trying to remember is whether we actually have the full capital plan that goes out as far as it needs to go, Christine, or whether we were still, I know we were building it out, I just wasn't sure.
So we, you're talking about, so we have the five-year capital plan, and then we have the 20-year for the facility, facilities plan.
Right.
We have to...
This is, this is facilities.
You're talking facilities. So we're, we're preparing right now an RFP to go out in January or February of '23 to look at updating that 20-year capital plan. It's about 10 years now, and you really should do it every 10 years. And the original facilities plan didn't include public safety or the town garage because they were too new at the time, and now they're getting to the point where they need to be recommissioned.
Okay, and so that is my pet peeve. So if I, and this could be very controversial and about to say, but I remember sitting in the audience and looking at pictures when we talked about doing the highway. And the rooms were disgusting, they were cluttered, and there's no reason for that, other than maybe the, the building was too small or whatever. But the TLC to these new facilities has to be priority one. And like I use, I keep always bringing up the tennis courts, but a crack starts out really small. And when it gets to be this gaping, massive gouge in, in a tennis court, it should have been attacked from day one when the first crack appeared, and it never did. So now we have the highway department, and we have the public safety building. They're starting to get, what were we just saying, eight years old, six years old. Someone needs to be responsible to make sure that they're not starting to get cluttered, to get, to get unnecessarily over, beat up, that let's get ahead of it. So, I mean, Mo, I don't know with your staff if it's, if someone's responsible for certain areas, but like, hey, guys, you can't make it look like a, like a, like a pile of crap. I mean, it's, this town owned, and I'm not saying he does, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, it does not.
The pictures, I know you weren't here, and we did it. The pictures were, blew me away, sitting in the audience, like, how does somebody let a building get that nasty?
So we do, we do look at preventive maintenance around the building. We look at, we look at a lot of units with the facilities department, changing all the filters, making sure they're well done in the parking lot, filling cracks as soon as they, they arrive. Every time we do crack filling for the town, we look at the garage, and we fill any cracks that are in the parking lot before they go out to the road. Just to make sure that we're covering what we can. We painted the different parts of the salt shed that, that start to fade, areas around the building that we look at to, to keep, to keep covered. So, and even in the garage, looking at possibly resurfacing some of the garage floors in the mechanic's bay, looking at proposals for that. So we are trying to do what we can to keep it...
Right. And, and we have a facilities department. We didn't have a facilities department back then. We didn't have a municipal building stabilization fund, which we put into place in 2018. And if you recall, back then, our capital plan was, we got to the end of the budget cycle, and it was, hey, we might have $200, $250,000, see what you can do. So we didn't have a lot of funds available to be able to do what we now allow a lot of our department heads and our facilities department to do. And I think all of us, you know, sing the praises of preventive maintenance on a daily basis. So we are attempting to not ever get into that position again.
Yeah, so as long as we're doing that, the TL, because it's, I'd rather have Mo come to a meeting and say, "Guys, we just got XYZ in the building, and if we take care of it today, it's whatever. But if I let it sit, it's going to be four times the cost in five years." I feel like that's what has happened in the past, not putting blame anywhere, but I just want to make sure we don't, it's with two beautiful buildings that we try to keep as beautiful as possible.
Well, one thing to understand, too, is that the nature of our business is a little different than most departments. I mean, we are, we, it's a construction business, basically, and it's, it's very difficult to keep that level of, you know, of beauty and beautification for a particular building, but, you know, we try to do the best we can with, with the type of business that we're in. So, but it does take, take a little bit of money to, for the preventive maintenance and to keep that ongoing business. But we'll do, we do the best we can with it, and we continue.
I'd reinforce Christine's point, because I was on the board committee when we were, I can look back now and say, we should have done what we've done in the last few years a long time ago. Just wasn't smart enough at the time to realize it. But we did, because we, and this gets to the Prop Two and a Half override issue, and it gets to, it gets to Pete's point, is that if, if you're going to run a town that has discipline around its budget, and you are going to be mindful of not just simply burdening taxpayers with whatever the cost is.
Right.
What we did when we created that stabilization fund is we took the capital expenditure decision back from the very last thing we thought about in the budgeting cycle, which was what's left, and let's see how we can divvy it up in the best way possible. We moved that whole thing to the front end and said, "No, we've got an automatic stabilization fund with this prescribed policy for how we're going to fund that." Now, ideally, what we're funding that stable, is both stabilization funds with, is in sync with what our facilities plan says we need. So we kind of, I'm not sure that we're 100% in line there yet, but that's the point.
We're getting there.
But the thing is, when you pull the capital expenditure decision into the front end of the budget, now what's happening is we're starting to isolate the operating end of the budget at the back end. So either you sit there and say, and we don't control our budget, and it is what it is, and we just send the bill into the taxpayers. And there are some taxpayers here in this town that are good with that. As far as I can tell, whatever happens on their, our real estate bill is sort of a rounding error on the checkbook. For a whole lot of other people, that's not true. And I think it's the mix of people in the town that makes Medfield what it is. Otherwise, we just become a community of economic elites who kind of have, you know, demonstration projects called 40Bs that show us we're compassionate. And that's, I don't think what we ever have been, is what we want to be. So there's, there is, the point is that, Pete, I don't know, my intention in talking about what I did isn't necessarily, so we're going to slash heads to get there, but we might be slower at hiring people, for sure. And there are operating things that don't necessarily need to grow. And when people come in and say, "We want the town to do this, 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 and this," if those are expansions of service, there is a trade-off. You don't just expand the services because somebody wants them, because there's a cost to it. So it's not like it's an easy thing to do, but I'm suggesting we should look at doing it.
Okay. All right, so that falls in line with your, you know, update and revise the capital maintenance plan. And then the other, just where you have in red, tap ARPA funding to accelerate progression, excuse me, process, progress on sidewalk construction. Have we done, and I know, I know we're supposed to be having an update with what we're doing with sidewalks, but do we kind of have like the high-risk, below-risk? I know 109 is a priority, and that's where the state funding is coming in. But then roads like Pine Street, Phillips Street, Causeway...
You're talking about sidewalks?
Sidewalks, or even road improvement, where maybe taking out some of the blind curves or trees that just, that just elevate the risk uncertain of the long windy roads that we know initially were designed for horse and cars and not for pedestrians. I get that. But if we're going to have people living on streets like that, can we do something? Can we at least acknowledge that there may be areas of town that we could address?
It's, it's a lot of, you know, with these, with these type of roads, there's not a lot of right-of-way. So to put in anything to widen a road, to put in sidewalks, is land-taking. That's, that becomes very expensive.
Sure.
Permanent easements, temporary easements, you know, land takings for these particular items. So if we were to look at something like that, these small, like, like Phillips Street and, you know, Causeway and things like that, there's, there's a lot of obstacles to face, plus wetland areas and everything else. So it's, it's a large cost for those types of roadways. It's, it's a question, is, is the town willing to pay that money to redo these roads to get to that point? You know, it's different, it's difficult to, to improve your infrastructure when you don't have the boundaries for that infrastructure.
And if I'm not mistaken, when I first got elected, I asked a question about how South Street Extension got from being a crazy windy road like it is, Secoak is in Norfolk, to what we have today. And that, if I'm not mistaken, that was state-funded, yes? And that was like a 10-year project?
That was before my time, but yes, that was a state-funded project. That was on the tip.
And really went in as a, as a sewer reconstruction project.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And then the next question is, for some of the roads you called out, you know, do people who live on Pine Street want to have Pine Street look like South Street Extension? Because if it is, then suddenly everything, suddenly those, that windiness also helps keep things at a slower pace and a bit more in character. So there's...
Sure.
This is besides, too. I mean, I, you know, there's people that like the privacy or like the, the country-ness of that, or some people want the sidewalks and have that connection to the center of town. So it's, it's difficult to satisfy everybody.
Sure.
You have to look at, you know, what's in the best interest of the town and, you know, fiscal responsibility as well.
I wish we could do more for sidewalks, like, I think it's Walpole Street goes, when you go into Puget Farm, I think it's the street that runs into Dover Center, where they have this sidewalk, but it winds through the woods, and it's, you know, it's really cool.
Lincoln does that, too, with sidewalks. I like those.
Yeah, but then you really need either, I guess, permission from landowners or really big right-of-way, because some of those, they go, like on North, several years ago, there was a woman who came to a town meeting, and she made a very eloquent appeal to put sidewalks on North Street. The only problem was that if you look at North Street, you know, there's, there's big ditches, and there's, the right-of-way wasn't there. And I, I thought she made a great argument. The problem was technically, it was just a nearly impossible thing to do.
Depending on the sidewalks you put in, if you do put curving in, things like that, you have to think about grading, because is, when she blocked the water from sheet flowing off the road, you have to account for that. So that's another expense, so I think about it a lot.
So, Mo, we're still waiting to get your sidewalk consultants plan, I think, aren't we?
For the presentation that we made.
Aren't, aren't you going to look at the hierarchy of the sidewalk in town? Some sort of plan for what sidewalks come when?
So we were looking at the ADA transition plan that we brought to you a few weeks back. That was to look at the, how it would go about, start with those heat maps from the center of town, from schools, from playgrounds, things, and making connections.
Yep.
That was the kind of the first goal. As far as a full-blown sidewalk inventory and plan to, to extend sidewalks, we haven't got to that point.
Are you going there, I guess is my, I thought you were going there, but maybe it doesn't sound like you're intending to go there.
That would probably be in the future. Right now, we're trying to concentrate on making those connections, trying to get as many people to these different areas, as well as taking care of ADA compliance.
Can I put some, I want to put some words, because this has been, the reason, I think I'm the one that put about, can we use ARPA funds for sidewalks? But, and the reason I did that was because over the past 10 years, probably a topic that I've heard raised at selectman meetings as much as any other topic, is people from various parts of the town that want a sidewalk in their neighborhood, or they want a sidewalk that connects to them. And whatever, I'm going to put some words in your mouth, and maybe they're wrong, but I think what I hear you saying is, you know, we, we did a study, we have the heat map, that basically we're saying, correct, get the sidewalk straight from the center of town into some of these major clusters of where the greatest activity is. I know that there's people throughout the town that want sidewalks that are way beyond this sort of, you know, the center of the galaxy here. We hate to tell people that want them, no. But for all intents and purposes, at least for practical purposes at this point in time, A, we don't have the budget for it, B, there are higher priority sidewalks that need to get improved closer into town. And that's why we did this analysis, was to try to strengthen the core, if you will, before we start sending shoots out into the solar system. If we do build those kinds of sidewalks, they're probably only going to get built when there's some development in town that creates a compelling reason that a chute has to go out, you know? For instance, there has been talks about extending sidewalks and Dale heading out toward the state hospital and connecting well. I don't think we're there yet, but, you know, presumably you could have something like that. But I think a couple of years ago, we had Edge, is it Edge Mount? The people that lived up there, they were, they wanted their sidewalks plowed because their kids walk to school, and it's like, I'm not sure if things are going to get a whole lot better for you than maybe they are right now, because we just don't have the capacity for it. Is that, is that a clear-eyed view?
I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like, I look at Phillips Street, that gets such heavy usage as an access to 109, and it's also an access to... 109, and it's also an access between the Wheelock property and the high school, because not everybody's going up South Street.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
The only other comment I have in there is gonna go to you, Christine. When we talk about full costs associated with expansion of town staff, how often, if at all, do you use contract workers for, let's say, a job where you haven't fully flushed out what you need? So by bringing a contract worker in, you're limiting costs to the town, and you can also sort out, okay, the role's not exactly what we thought, it needs more time, less time?
Wherever we can.
Okay.
Yeah. Susan McPhee would be a perfect example of that, doing the energy conservation work.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Anything else, Pete?
I think we've covered the points that I had here.
Good. Three, community housing goals, this is where we made a lot of progress in.
So the only thing I added in here was where we talk about provide housing for Medfield adults who are, who are capable of living independently with assistance, is work, to have, work with the Affordable Housing Trust, because I know that is one of our charters. Like, we are, we're, we've just done the survey, I think we reached out to 72 people that responded to the survey. So that, just knowing that that is one of the goals of the Affordable Housing Trust, is to find a piece of town-owned property that is non-conforming, that could potentially be used for some form of adult group home.
Okay, so that's the second category. So I take it the answer to my question there is, yes, we do.
Yes.
Need a goal for group home development, and what you're saying is, look for, look for a site or identify, what's that called? Identify the site. Did you say a non-conforming site?
Yeah, I know that's why.
A site that, a site capable of supporting a group home.
Yep.
Okay.
And there's just some, there are quite a few non-conforming lots around town.
Actually, a group home can be built on a non-conforming lot, because it doesn't have to comply with zoning.
Right, you said it can, right?
Under the Federal Fair Housing Act, it, it can go in anywhere, basically, so.
But it doesn't have, the non-conforming part means that we could put a group home somewhere that it wouldn't, or that a regular place couldn't.
Exactly.
But if we found a site that was great for a group home, and it happened to be conforming.
Conforming, that's even better. Right, right, exactly. Just, no, that, that's one of the Affordable Housing Trust's key initiatives. So we've got somebody looking at it, now we're gonna just work with them. And then, the other thing, when I look at increased availability for senior housing to enable seniors to afford to live in Medfield, we heard this a lot during the state hospital discussions. Many residents continue to ask about senior housing, condo options, what were the plans with the cottages, could we convert one of the cottages up there to a group home? Like, the, I, we don't have any answers up there yet, but we know that that land is staying with the town for now, staying with the town and the state. But just something that we should be looking at is, we know for the first five to seven years with Trinity, they're going to be rentals, just by the way they're gonna recoup their tax credits. But after that, you know, what, what could we be pushing for, asking?
Well, first off, I think after that, we have to, we have to ask the question, do we actually need to be pushing for anything more? Recognize, first off, that the Hinckley-South project, for us, is gonna be a good, you know, test of what the demand for.
How quickly it'll go.
Non-40B, small A affordable housing for seniors might look like, because that one's literally designed not to be 40B, it is 40B, but not, there's a lot of units there that are intended to be small A affordable.
24, yeah.
Still a pretty high price, but it's, around here, it's considered affordable to be $450,000 to $600,000 for a house. And it'll be interesting to see who, and how fast, and how thoroughly people buy up those units. When Trinity comes online, it will be interesting to see how many seniors, again, that are not necessarily, although they could be, 40B affordable, choose to live up there. Because when we did the senior housing survey, and we asked people, that was like the second most popular place for people to be, was up there. If you, basically, they were saying, if you can build the kind of stuff that I wanna live in, I would love to live up at the state hospital. So I find, I think that Trinity's project is gonna be a second really important test to see what the, what the senior housing appetite is. If those two things happen, with what we learned from those two things, then I think we're gonna be in a better spot to assess what's left compared to what the senior housing survey.
But the only thing is, like, to me, I don't think we're comparing apples to apples. Like, you, what is being built next to the center right now is, you are gonna buy those outright, right? So somebody can sell their home downsized, and they're, and they've, they know their expense.
Yep.
Right now, Trinity's pure rental, and I don't know how many people wanna be pure rental when they, when they, so that's why I'm saying, as, let's, I don't disagree with what you're saying, let's see how it goes, but let's see if the interest is, oh, shoot, it's not a condo. So I, so it's not, it's not my desirable, but, but what options would be up there down the road against a 10-year plan? So where would we be?
So, so the issue, the issue comes in when you're looking at for purchase units.
Yes.
There are a lot of seniors who would like a low-price unit that they can buy. And if you do like a Turtel Burke thing, where everything is, where prices are controlled, then, then you can get there. If you want to just take a piece of prime real estate, like where the, where the arboretum is at the state hospital, and turn it into senior housing, as a town, we're gonna have to look at what the true market value of the arboretum is, because as a real estate, piece of real estate property, it's probably extremely valuable if you develop it for housing that is capable of getting the most that you could possibly get for. If you want housing, the kind that Pete's talking about, where the people that are there basically are paying a good, solid real estate price tax, but they don't have any kids, then you don't necessarily want it to be the lowest-cost housing around on a piece of prime real estate like that. So there's, there's a real trade-off. But I can tell you, there's some people in town, if we ever proposed to put up artificially low-priced housing for sale, which was then not restricted, they would be all over us, and quite justifiably, for taking piece of town property and giving it away to the first owner, who would then cash in on the market value when they did the resale. So it's, it's a tricky thought process to figure out how to do that. When we, I first thought that seniors should want rental. And the reason is, because you sell your house in Medfield, you bring in all that equity, and then if you could have an apartment, that, you know, rental place on the Charles River at the state hospital, that would be wonderful. You, you got all the equity in the bank, you don't have to put it in there. And I had somebody, one of these meetings come up to me at the end, said, the thing you're not thinking about is if you're, if you're, you and your spouse are still alive. If one of you goes into assisted living or a nursing home, the way it works, is if you have the money in the bank, the nursing home says, thank you very much, and take it off. If you have the money in your house, they don't touch it. So there is a, there is a real consideration.
Oh, God.
About sale versus rental. On the other hand, I'm still curious to see whether there are some seniors who would say, you know, for a nice place in the redeveloped campus up at the state hospital on the Charles River, in my, I, I wanna see whether they really, whether the decision's driven by that exit, or whether there's more interest in doing something like that. I, I don't know.
Just food for thought, that's what I.
Yeah, yeah.
You're also driven by the fact that you can't reserve housing just for seniors, which...
Yeah, although, well, I guess.
You can, I mean, there, there are 55 over developments, Bill.
But you're worried about that more every time you try to do something, you know, other pieces of property in town, issues of affordability versus residents in town versus, I mean, it's complicated.
Really complicated.
So you can age-restrict the housing, but I would argue that you, you don't wanna do that, because you want a diversity of people, different ages, living in the property. I think that, you know, there were people who went to the, the Medfield State Hospital meetings and said, we want you to build senior housing up there. And in my mind, it is gonna be senior housing, it's gonna be the size of units that seniors want, and it's just, and it's not ownership.
You've got, don't forget, you've got 140 one-bedroom apartments, that's about three and four.
So that's such a huge project, and it's gonna make such a big difference in the housing inventory in town.
Who knows what it looks like with market conditions between now and the final fit machine, right around, and they finish the process.
I do think we're headed in a good direction.
Yes, yes. And then my last one is, I do agree that the gun range action is, this is where it should go.
Yep, yep.
Because that's gonna.
That's all in yellow, I guess, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I changed it to blue, just so I could see it easier.
Yes, okay.
So that was number three.
This is one area that I think we've, we've probably made the most progress in the last six years. Promote the healthy and responsible development of Medfield's youth.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I had comments.
Sorry, I, I, sorry, we've been going back.
So I would start at the top, and, and on the, I just, you know, this just, the 40B and where we are just reminded me that we're about, probably about eight units shy of being at 10% once we get the McCready development, the Affordable Housing, people are working on next door to the townhouse here.
It will be 80%, 80%, we're 80 units over when we get the state hospital.
Yeah, but that's.
Actually, no, we'll be.
You don't get credit for that until it's permitted. And so that, you know, the permitting on that is a long ways away.
Yep.
And Rose Bay, apparently, I don't know the current status of that, but it seems to be a long ways away, too. So I think there's a town that we should try to maybe be figuring out how to get those last eight units of affordable housing, because otherwise, we're at risk of someone coming in here, and if you're not at 10%, they can put in 200 units in Medfield. So we're, we're kind of in a, in a tenuous spot, and so I think that we should be working very hard to get those, get above the 10%.
Yep.
And figure out some way. I mean, you know, maybe, maybe approaching some of the, some apartment owner in, in town and seeing if they wanted to convert their apartment to affordable units, and all of a sudden pick up 10 units there. In terms of the group homes, I would like to hopefully have the town work on group homes in two ways. One would be the group home that is funded from the state, or the government entity that wants to support the, the disabled person that's gonna live in the home. But the other model that I think the town should pursue, working with, is the people, it's creating the sort of a condo model, where people that have money can, can sort of buy a unit for their child to live in this group home in Medfield somewhere, so. Because I think there's a huge need for that. And then in terms of.
So Pete, just to, because I think I'm probably gonna take the action to try to draft an update that synthesizes, I'm gonna, what I think, what I propose I say there is, explore alternative financing approaches to support group home, the construction of group home.
It's, sure, sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's.
You can change it, this will be a draft.
I mean, that's a private, a private model, basically, where.
Susan Sino's working on it?
Yes.
Although I think she's working on the, on the, on the state-funded model, is, is what I understood her to be doing. And then I would put in somewhere here, a goal of working for property tax relief for the seniors, because I think that if, for every senior that we keep in their, in their four-bedroom house in Medfield, we're, we're keeping the municipal costs of the town of Medfield down, because the minute that four-bedroom house turns over, it, it has children that are gonna add to the, the cost of schooling in Medfield. So I would, I would work towards some sort of property tax relief for seniors that have, you know, that qualify by long-term residency in the town, by age, and that, and basically so that the rest of us would support them to stay in town.
So Pete, I'm gonna put that up in the first area.
Okay.
And right now, at least, I'm just saying, explore senior property tax relief.
Yeah, Wayland and Sudbury have done it, I think you need legislation. They're trying to pass some bill to, to make it just an opt-in system, so you don't need to get special legislation, but that hasn't happened. So, and that's it, sir.
I was actually just, I just shared an article with Christine today about what Westwood, how when they took the vote in 2021, they had a couple of citizen petitions regarding senior tax break, et cetera, which I thought was rather interesting.
They voted them in?
I don't know the result, it was a gentleman had put a, an editorial, he was on, I forget what committee in Westwood, it was very well-written. He was just giving the facts, he wasn't violently pushing one way or the other, but he was trying to educate the, the citizens on the different warrant articles, and what each one was trying to say in simple terms. It was very interesting. Go ahead.
Okay. Go for it. Promote the healthy and responsible development of Medfield's youth.
Uh, where am I here? Okay, so this is, yeah, okay, so certainly, the new school building committee will be, should be working closely with the community to ensure we're getting the right feedback. You have in here Medfield outreach action here as follow, so that, I, I, I would look to see what Kathy has to say there.
Yeah, that's, that, that should be. So Kathy, if you're still on here, the question is, having gone through the strategic planning process, if there's anything that you think should be elevated to the level of a town goal, let us know.
Let's see if she is popped up here. I'm here. She's here, we can ask her questions.
She'll think about it, she said.
You never know when you're gonna get called on an abortion.
And then, I love the, the idea of trying to provide the, the young people in town opportunity to observe and participate in town governance. I've said it before in, in our board of selectmen meetings, I would love to see a student liaison to the board of selectmen in some way, shape, or form, whether it's a senior project. But I just think, someone who's getting ready to go to college, who hasn't completely wrapped their head around what they wanna do, there are so many job opportunities in this building, in this town, that go unrecognized until you get later in your life, and you're like, whoa, like, look at all these different opportunities. If somebody was trying to decide what they maybe want to explore, to, to be a senior project, to choose to do it, the way the school committee has a liaison, I think would be awesome. And then I see here, you know, what else? The fire department, cadet program, police department internships, town hall internships. You know, Mo, I don't know, in, in your years, if you've had any young people come in and shadow you, shadow some of your guys?
Not, not here, and when I was in another town, we used to do that, so.
Yeah, I love that.
I think that as well.
I think that's a huge responsibility for the town to set goals to, to help the youth.
Well, we're on it, we have some, we have some ideas, and we've been talking to a few people about ways we could bring more people into our meeting, and the question came up is whether or not you'd be willing to meet at 6 o'clock.
Be what?
Whether or not you'd be willing to meet at 6 o'clock.
AM or PM, before school?
No.
I'm a morning person, I wouldn't work.
So, it's not something we need to decide, but the, we'll present it to you, but we've been talking to Medfield TV, who would actually like to bring in some more students to work, but they can't work past 10 o'clock.
No guarantees.
I know, so, so the suggestion was made, if, that if you were, if you started at 6, we could get them out before.
Yeah.
Because legally, they can't work past 10 o'clock.
I would imagine now, for sure, that we wouldn't just look at that as a more aggressive challenge.
That may or may not have been discussed.
Well, anyway, it's good, yeah, it's good, it's funny, my reaction, if we had multiple departments that were interested, strictly, it would have to be the interest. Part of, unlike the schools that have a student liaison, because it's the school committee, and you kinda have a reason, my head went in a different direction, which is to say, the town is open to students who would like to learn, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do that with the, the board of selectmen? That's great, but somebody might be interested in the planning board, or.
Yeah.
Somebody might be interested in DPW, or the police department, or the fire department. So setting that up, assuming the support was there across the departments, to say, listen, the town basically has a commitment to making it possible for you to get in, observe, we'll participate as much as we can let you participate, but you have to step forward and say you have a particular interest in a particular board. That might be another, maybe it's complimentary, but another way to do it.
I don't know if you remember, the intern we had, his name was Chris, about three years ago, who came from Tri-County, who was doing an internship both at the police department.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And in my office, and it was fantastic. So we're hoping to do that again. We've also identified a really exciting, well, I think it's super exciting, project in my office, that we'll be reaching out to some of the AP Gov teachers over at the high school, to see if they have anybody who's interested in taking that on this summer. So we're moving forward.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, but, years ago, I did a career day at a middle school when I first moved to Medfield. And again, I don't know if they're doing those, where they, do you realize some of the jobs exist right here? Whether you want to be into finance, you know, talk to Georgia, look what she's doing. I mean, she's like, it's like running a small, a large, a mid-sized company, not a small company. So, okay, I love that.
Pete, on the, on the second category there, Influencing the Connections Program to Enhance Contract Between the Town's Seniors and the Town's Youth Grant-Funded, and I guess, I just, you know, I think that's great. If we're doing that, good. I'm not, I guess I don't know all the details of that, but the more we can have interactions with the youth, that's great. I just, I put down here, it's, I'm not sure that it belongs here, but I've become a great believer in the fact that social media is hurting our children and that the more that we can limit their access to social media. I just, I read this week that the high school that I went to doesn't allow you to carry a cellphone during the school day. And I thought, what a great idea. So, so that's just one of my random thoughts. In red, you've got Youth Outreach or Metro Outreach Action here, and the issue there, I think, is money. I mean, we got a letter from Kathy McDonald at Metro Outreach telling us that there was a much greater need in town for mental health services and that she basically needed money. So it comes an issue of whether you, you want to cut the budget or whether you want to try to provide the services. In terms of the town partnership, I, it occurred to me that this, I mean, the Scouts are very organized and active and maybe there's some way that the town could partner with the Scouts and the, and the youth programs at the churches that are pretty active, too, I think. So, and I'll just relate the experience that we had at the Medfield Foundation, because we have a youth leadership crew of a couple dozen kids. And they weren't interested in what the Medfield Foundation was doing at its board meetings. We invited them to come and there was one who came and was interested, but basically they weren't interested. And if you can, if you can find the kids and they're interested and, you know, the town had this one intern that was good, that's great. But unless you can somehow create something that's interesting enough for them, I'm just afraid that it's not going to be sustainable.
Talking about seniors and. Yeah, this one actually called that out as linking, you know, young people and seniors. And that's a logical place that that would happen, but. I also think you're talking about working through AP Gov. Probably the students that might be most interested in these kinds of things would probably be AP Gov-type students.
One of, one of my favorite programs that the town had was Ron Griffin's sending the veterans into the schools to, I thought that was just a brilliant idea on his part.
Well, and I think our plan that, you know, we haven't presented to you formally yet, but this human services division that will allow more collaboration between outreach and the Council on Aging and the Veteran Services, we'll start to see some of that happen as we, as that evolves.
Yeah, it's a good time to think about that with the change of the Council on Aging.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Next one, five.
Do you want to, I know Chris Potts is asking me about the.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on topic.
Oh, okay. I didn't just, well, I think she brought it up, probably because I said the new school committee, we work closer with the community. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, so the question was, has the new school committee members been sworn in? And the short answer to that is I don't know.
I don't believe they have been all sworn in.
How will the committee get kicked off and start? I think the action there, which is actually a topic I want to bring up with you guys, given that there's three appointing authorities that created the school building committee and the school building committee has now been designated, I would suggest that either, in order not to have a three-way joint meeting between us, the moderator and the school committee, I was going to raise with you guys that I would reach out to Scott and to Anna May and just suggest that we reach out to the school committee and suggest that they have their first organizing meeting, make a recommendation on who the first temporary chair should be.
Okay.
My thought on that, subject to their ideas, would be that Mike Weber would be a logical choice, because he's, he was actually on the last building. Doesn't mean he's the chair for this next project, but as a convening authority, if he's willing to do that, that would be a good way for them just to get started, meet each other, figure out who the chair is going to be and move, move ahead. So at that point, to Chris's question, I think that the appointing authority's job is done and it's then up to the school building committee to move forward. Presumably, they would do that after the start of the year.
Yeah. And Brittany will send out communications to all of them, having them come in with the procedures for being sworn in, so.
Perfect.
Okay. Let's see, item five is, let's see, this is sort of preserving the town's character. So this is a bit more ethereal than some of the others. Any comments?
I have a similar comment here in terms of just trying to stay ahead of potentially costly repairs, so we'll look at the fields, we'll look at certain areas, but listening to the conversation earlier, that's kind of part of our capital planning reserve, so that's good.
Well, this, this part here was intended to get at the issue of who's responsible for maintaining it. So it's more of an organizational, so the capital planning is taking care of the dollar side of it.
Okay.
But this whole idea of who is actually responsible for doing this is, I think, I actually think the Open Space Recreation Planning Committee is, I think, going to be answering that question for purposes of our plan by June.
Yes, they're answering that on public spaces. In terms of town-owned spaces, we have been working, Mo, Brittany and I have been working on what our existing maintenance plan is and how we're coordinating all of that together.
When you say, when you sound town-owned spaces, what are we?
I'm talking about more town-owned buildings, like the Dwight Derby House.
This, well, the part that I cared about here was the open space stuff.
Oh, open space, yes, that's being taken care of by the open space plan.
This gets at the mishmash of who cuts what grass, which areas.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And then on top of that, it gets to the open space issues. I think John Thompson gets credit in my book for this, where he suddenly said, we have these, we have these fields, and if you don't do anything with the fields, they revert to forest. If you're not, so if you want fields, you've got to manage them as fields. And I don't know that we've had anyone that's, I mean, we're doing it now on a sort of catch and can basis, so. And there's, as you know, I have a walkway beside my house that gets.
I'm looking at a lot of, a lot of the town-owned land and inventory, different areas of things that should be taken care of, who takes care of them and should try to consolidate that and try to get that figured out.
Right. And that's, that's what this was trying to get at.
Like, so the land behind Wheelock, I think they call it the Home Quest Land, like, who's responsible for cutting that? So on the other side of the rock walls, when you think of the railroad tracks at Wheelock.
There's a field out there that we, we do once a year.
Okay.
There's sometimes this field that we hire farmers to, to take care of.
Okay.
They take the hay and there's areas where, you know, it depends if it's watered-pubbed land, whether it's conservation land. So it's, it's really not solidified yet, but we have met with Brittany, my highway supervisor, people that have been here for quite a few years to look into all the different areas around town and inventorying the land and see if we do anything on those particular pieces of property.
And then will you have a map, Christine, that'll kind of highlight, like, almost spiked by color code, who's got what? So it's a simple, okay, perfect.
One of the problems that John brought up and several people at the hospital who were mowing the field that the state retained is that you need to, you need to have made a commitment so that the person who's doing the mowing and taking the hay has to, in fact, fertilize the fields to make them produce the hay to make it worth what he's doing. It isn't just all growing wild in mowed when it's, you know, reaches, you know, three feet or two feet or whatever, you know. You have to actually prep the fields and invest in the fields. So there, when you decide what you're going to do, and if you're planning on selling the hay or using the hay or whatever, you're going to have to make an investment. Somebody's going to have to make an investment. You might have to do a long-term lease so that the person who's doing the mowing will be willing to let the field mature and grow and whatever.
So some, some of this, you know, Mo, to your point, I don't know that the DPW necessarily has the agricultural skills to have that kind of insight. So I'm not implying that the answers are, well, it's some sort of a redrawn line between DPW and Parks and Rec. I think this, this is a much broader, you go out to the Walpole border, out near the scout land where the Red Gate Farm is, go all the way down, there's a path, I'd be willing to put 20 bucks down right now, you can't walk that path.
Oh, right.
Because it's, it's a jungle. You can go out behind my house, behind the pasture, which is a town field that we have leased on occasion, that was for some reason furrowed like three or four years ago. And so now, not only is it not a field that does anything, it's actually a field that has this furrow, so you can't really walk through it very easily. It's just there. And it's been sitting there doing nothing for three or four years now, which is the path that's right next to my house that runs back up to there. So there is a path which was a little better maintained this year, at least, or at least the weeds didn't grow as fast as they usually do, but it dumps you out to this no-man's land of a furrowed field. But you'll, you'll, you have to be careful not to twist your ankle just trying to walk through the field. So it's like, we have a path that's going to counter-product. It would be better if the field had just been left alone. And I'm not saying that's, it's not clear to me that's a DPW in the long term.
No, that's, that's, well, that field is a, is a state field.
Yeah, it's a town field.
No.
The one right behind it, behind us?
No, that's a state field. That belongs to the concert.
I thought that was a town field.
You're talking about A1?
No, no. I'm talking about on the other side of the brook, near where I live, right behind the pasture.
That's state land.
I'm pretty sure that's the.
Is that still, that's also state land? I thought, for some reason, I thought that was.
Sort of like behind the condos area and the olive area.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that was.
That's parcel A1.
Yeah.
I mean, the states let people grow pumpkins there in the past.
So the state, but it's still, so I guess that, that will get solved by our efforts, but maybe the walkway that leads to it would.
No, but it's a problem for somebody. Somebody's got to push, just like we have to push the state now to try to get them to take care of the fields they own up at the, you know, the farm.
I always thought it was on the other side of the brook is what the state.
And I think the long-term leasing has been a problem with the state up there. You know, the farmers, as you say, want to have a long-term lease so they can fertilize the fields.
Well, there were people who were coming in who didn't have a lease or were taking advantage of the fact that nobody was watching them.
Anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't really have anything here. I mean, I like the tree inventory and I think that that would make sense to do.
Okay. So that one kind of stays as it is. Then that gets us to the sixth one, which is the new category that Hilly has actually recommended. And let's see if I can find the right part of it. And Hilly, I think we all got a copy of your revised, so there was an initial draft that I took, cut it, that I took at it, and then Hilly revised it with some suggestions she had. I've had a chance to review what you said, so I have reactions. I don't know whether the two of you do.
Yeah. Well, and there was an initial draft that Hilly did. So we have three drafts, actually.
Yeah, well, and I didn't get hers, because I was at the dentist, so I read it when I got here. So I'm not as well-versed, but I, I'm in check with where she's, where she entered.
So the initial draft that Hilly did was focused on Tom Cap, carbon reduction, you know, net zero. And when we asked to have that drafted, basically I said, don't let it just be carbon reduction, Tom Cap. And that's, I kind of said, that was just unfair of me to ask Hilly to do the broader spectrum. So the thing that Hilly reacted to today is the cut that I took at broadening, get to the environmental stuff. And then, and we didn't have any specific actions in this at all, we're just trying to get the top-level stuff figured out.
Yes.
I do have a question. Can I sort of go back to these town goals, is this something you set for the whole town? Or sort of for yourself? So, okay. So is there, regarding any public input?
Yeah, there's, yeah, this is on the pub, this is on the web. The intention when we first did this was to articulate what we thought the town goals were. And basically, the intention was for this to be a living document that says, it should be real enough that if you're trying to figure out how to make decisions, this is capturing sentiment. Now, because the Board of Selectmen drafted it, when I first drafted, the very first draft, I, I didn't draft it because I had opinions about town goals, I tried to capture what I thought I'd heard about what people said town goals were for something like 20 years before I ever tried to do this. So that very first thing was just me trying to capture it, and then we had a discussion. That's what got us to the original goals. When the town-wide master plan undertook their effort for, for reasons that are beyond me, the consultants didn't point them to the town goals and say, start there, they started from scratch. That was not something I was happy about, but as a, as a practical matter, the town-wide master plan goals were 80% of what these were anyway, which makes sense, because if these were always intended to be what the town seemed to want.
Right.
Then the fact that they went out and asked the town what they wanted, came up with an 80% similar answer, that's probably pretty good. So the intention here is that these are town goals, they should be guiding us in our thinking, but they are, but it was a way, if people think these are the wrong goals, that we can have a debate about what the goals should be.
Right.
But you have them documented somewhere. Otherwise, everybody's got an opinion and they're just kind of.
So I think of them a little differently, Gus. I think of them as the select board goals, because we really haven't gotten a lot of town input into this. It's really just been the select board talking about these.
Well, Pete, they've been out there, we, I've got input back when we did this. So there was, there was public input.
Well, and the meeting that we had, this was good. I mean, when we talked about it back in September, there were quite a few people here and there was, there was good dialogue. So I, I look at it as, and I think this is important, there, someone new is coming in or they lease us an election every year for select board. So this is, this is representing the town. We represent the town. So yes, do we spearhead where these, you know, to try to get these goals done? Yes. But they should represent the town, not just the three people sitting on this side of the table. So I, so I do look at it as we, the town should be giving us feedback and we, we hopefully agree with what the town is saying, but then we, then try to do everything we can, working with the town administrator and the staff, to try to achieve the goals that are important to the town.
So I guess I would compare the input that we got on these to the input that the master planning committee got and the Medfield State Hospital Reuse Committee got, and they just got way more input. They, they reached out to the residents and got a lot of input back, whereas these are really just a select board discussion of.
Well, they're on the website, which I think is important, that if somebody is interested and they're curious as to what we're, what the town is striving for, the goals are right there. Now, we are the three people.
Yeah, I absolutely agree that we should have them. And that's, I mean, I've argued for these all along. And, and, but I, but I just say, as I think, you know.
We've had these for five years, Pete.
They're more for the select board than the town, really.
Here's why I object to that, Pete. When you say they're more for the select board than for the town, all I hear in that is these really don't matter.
No, no.
I can tell you the actions are not what the select board is going to do or the Board of Selectmen is going to do. Some of them are.
Gus, I see them as, as the town's goals that have been crafted by the select board, so that, you know, maybe it's a semantic thing, but.
I think it is, because it's our job to do that. I mean, it's our job to set the goals, right? But it's our goal to listen to the town and make sure that we're, we're not bringing a.
And I was probably the person on the select board that asked that we start doing this on a regular basis.
I was.
I asked before you were even here, Gus.
Maybe, okay. Okay, fair enough. Perhaps you did.
Well, and I'll, and I'll.
A draft.
Well, and I'll poke at it, like, it's coming in this year. I thought it was something that we needed a dedicated meeting, so it wasn't something we, we're looking at the clock going, you know, we've got people in the audience waiting, let's do an entire night dedicated to talking it through, flushing it out, finding out, are some of them outdated? We did not have one, like, goal number six for looking at sustainability. So, so it's important that we, I think we should be doing this every year, every September when we decided to make sure that we're, we're keeping it in check.
Yep.
But again, it's, the more we do it, the more the town should be stepping forward, either sending, and I certainly got my fair share of people sending emails and pulling me aside at various events, asking about different goals that we're striving for. So I think it's, I really do see it as town goals, but we as the three leaders in the town, take the, take the leadership in achieving the goals, but knowing that Christine's going to be impactful and Bo's going to be impactful, there's other people that are going to be helping these goals get attained, but.
Yeah, my biggest sensitive point on the comment, Pete, is that the actions that we have are not just the list of things that the Board of Selectmen needs. If you look at what those actions are, like the affordable housing, we may be promoting the achievement of the goals, but it was the Affordable Housing Trust that had to do the heavy lifting. So that, that's my real objection in the, in the way we talk about it, say, well, these are the selectmen's goals, that means they're not everybody else's goals. And to your point, they were first articulated by the Board of Selectmen, but when the town-wide master plan went out and got all that input and came back with 80% of the same answer, and came back with 80% of the same answer, I would say that, that was because the starting point was what the public had talked about. It's just that it was over a 20-year period of time.
Yeah.
And the more important than any of that is that exactly what Hilly does, did here with Item Six is exactly what we want the public to do. If you read it and you're either going to say, "Gee, this is the goal you thought you had. I don't think we should do that." Then, then we could have a debate about that. Or, in this particular case, Hilly brought in, I think you're missing an area. And after almost six years, five years, it was like, first I said, "No, no, I'm not missing any." And then I looked and so I actually, yeah, we are. And so that's why we added the sixth area. That, it's the interaction that we're looking for. This is just an articulation of where we're going.
Yeah.
Goals require trade-offs and focus, and that's all we're trying to do with it, is I see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you for that.
Sure.
I want to be clear. I, I really enjoyed this discussion. I think, um, you know, the public should be made more aware of this opportunity for input. I agree that, you know, these probably capture lots of what the town is, is for you see happening. And, uh, you know, the collaboration between the departments and the committees and boards obviously highlights where, what the issues are. But I, 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 I think it would be great to have like an annual workshop or a discussion session or something where residents as well as...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that would be great. So Eileen, you're just seeing this for the first time. Pete, did you have comments? Did, did you react to Hilly's draft that came in today?
I, I read that, but I basically was working off of her original draft and your draft. But, but I like her, her edits.
I think you reacted to my draft, so this is...
I did.
Her, her response to my draft is the next update, so.
Yeah. Well, I started with her original draft, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, I only looked at this, this afternoon, and I can't say I'm representing the Energy Committee here. So, um, you know, obviously, it's important things, but, um, I'm here as a resident.
So these, so these, neither of you have actually had a chance to react. I did. I, so I have comments. I'll react. But I think we, we view this as a, rather than a final conversation today, this is just the next cycle, and that way you two can hear. I can give Hilly my comments. You can hear my comments, and then you can mull over this and we'll pick it back up after the New Year.
Okay.
Okay. So you want my comments? I actually liked much of what you said, not all of what you said. So in the, in the top level, the goal articulation, that's, is that, at least as we've had it, that's a pretty broad statement. I, I liked, you caught that, it was actually a typo that left out the word environment, sustainable environment that you put in there, so I agree with that. I didn't go, go along with the "as evidenced by the approval of climate goals," Article 22 at Town Meeting, May 2021. Mainly, first off, that's a very mechanical, very specific thing, and this is a lofty goal, so I don't, I think it's too micro. But on top of that, that's not the only thing. We passed, we passed plastic bans. We're working to improve our water. We're dealing with wildlife management. So there's a whole, you know, if you started to go there, you'd wind up with a laundry list of a bunch of things. And this was probably, this is a reaction that's probably consistent with how I reacted to the last draft, which is, it's not just about net zero by 2050. It's actually a broader set of environmental issues that I think this area should address, of which the climate change is one of those things. So that's perhaps a difference in our perspectives, but that's where I'm coming from with the comment. You took out the meeting, the town's responsibility, and talked about conscientious environmental stewardship. I like that. Both was, the little word "both" was fine. Uh, again, didn't like that as well as to pursuing the net zero 2050 goal because, again, it's very micro. It's talking about one particular thing. At this level, we're talking about a broader set of things. And then you added residents, contribute, ensure the sustained health and vibrancy of the town's residents and natural environment. I like that. I thought that was a good change. Down in the long-term, the, you know, the column that you've got most of the writing in, the long-term, five to 10 years, third, third, uh, second item, "Support the State 2030 Climate Goals," was what was worded. You said, "By implementing priority actions of Tom Cap." I will make the observation that we do not yet have a Tom Cap, final time cap, Tom Cap. So I'm reluctant to talk about a, a plan that is not yet finalized. I wouldn't object to it if we had a finalized plan, but we don't. So at this point, that was the thing I reacted to, not to categorically put it out, but right now we don't have that Tom Cap. Then the two down, "Hire a Sustainability Director," that one is not a goal. That's a decision that we might make at some point in pursuit of a goal. So it's not like we would never do that, except that that in and of itself, hiring someone's not a goal. That's an action that perhaps supports a goal, so I'd be looking for the goal there, not the simple hiring action. And again, all these, Hilly, all these are me speaking. Eileen, it's, I'm giving you my feedback. I'm not, I'm not trying to dictate something here. The next one down, this is minor. I liked the last item you had in that category. I would not put, follow the state's example. I wouldn't put that in there. I would, I would keep the rest of it, which is make climate considerations part of all relevant decision-making. And here's why I say that. If the state is doing something that makes sense, then we're going to follow the state's example. When we say we're going to follow the state's example, I see minds shutting off. That's like, well, we're not actually doing it ourselves. We're just, if the state's doing it, I guess we got to jump on the bandwagon. So I don't think that's how we should do that.
Can I directly respond to that?
Sure, yeah.
So, um, this and the previous, uh, you know, the hiring of Sustainability Director is really to support the, the town and the town departments in coordinating their responses and, and sort of helping them think about climate action and, and getting, you know, funding for that amount of sort of thing. As of this week, the town now has a cabinet-level climate, um, person to coordinate exactly that.
The town has a cabinet?
The state, the state.
Oh, the state.
Sorry.
I didn't hire anyone.
Sorry. This book, um, to do exactly that, to help all the agencies and departments think about climate and part of their decision-making and to coordinate their actions.
And to speak bluntly, I don't know whether that's a political action or a technical support role. That's, that's what worries me, is we put somebody in a position and they're really there for political purposes to promote a certain path. They're not there. And I say that recognizing, we hired someone a couple of years ago who I was worried was that, and he wasn't. He actually did us a lot of good, so I'm not, this is not a categorical issue that I've got. It's just that when we simply hire somebody for that role and we haven't articulated the goal and we haven't really laid out what that person's going to do, I think that's, that's basically not the thing that should be here is, is kind of that broad thing, that's all.
Right, but I, I, I do think, you know, we, we are on this path. The town decided that they wanted to pursue the goals, and I see...
That's all they've decided, though. We don't have a plan. There's no final plan yet. The plan was supposed to have been ready in March of 2022. And I'm making observations. I'm not, we're, this was my one concern when the town voted that, yes, we're going to pursue these goals. The one thing I said is, "Do not let anyone tell you that you signed a blank check when you approved this because there's nothing here that's concrete." We need concrete, we need a concrete plan. It needs to stand up to the, if there's resources that are, if it's a free plan, then it's a little easy. It doesn't matter much. But my guess is that it, whatever we decide we want to do has cost implications. Until you tell me it doesn't, I'll be, I'll be a really big supporter.
No, but it's clear, and obviously, it's not as a broad plan. And every action that gets implemented will come unscrewed, you know, how it gets implemented to take form. So I don't know exactly how you're going to evaluate the whole broad plan.
Sure, I'll tell you what a plan is for me, and you understand I've spent my career as a project management consultant. A plan is, here's what we're going to do, here's where we're going to do it, and here's what it's going to cost to get it done. That's the plan I'm looking for. Not a broad philosophical plan. I'm looking for an action plan that really says, "This is what we're going to do. This is what it's going to get done by. This is what it's going to cost." Then we can go into the town and say, "Now, are you prepared to make the commitment of those resources to get this job done?" That's the plan I'm looking for, and we ain't there yet, but we're starting to talk about hiring people. And it's like, cool.
I think, I think what you're looking for is a 20-year consulting to, you know, somebody to give, tell you what the next 20-year investment is going to look like.
A consultant?
Well, I mean, you know, we are a volunteer group. We can't do a 10-year plan on what exactly and give projects the cost and how to implement it. So we could just give you a broad plan of these are the strategies that we're going to follow and, you know, and then in good due time, come up with projects to fulfill particular actions. And those we can bring for you. But if, if you're looking for a detailed plan that has all the actions mapped out with economic considerations and, and cost estimate, I think we just need to hire a consultant to do that for us. There's no way a volunteer group can have that level of analysis for you?
Well, um... With whatever it is the committee thinks it can create in finalizing a climate action plan. Now, I'm not really sure what that will look like, but that's, I mean, I do know because you've got a certain organization, I shouldn't say that. I, I do know, basically, I assume in the final, you've gotten feedback from the public. You got feedback from me back in the summer, and I'm guessing you got feedback from Eileen and Pete as well. There is some articulation at whatever level of concept you're going to do it. That has to be finalized. You don't necessarily need a detailed plan for 20 years. So at some point here, as we talk about hiring people or considering it, it's to do something. That something is going to be concrete. It's going to take a specified amount of time. It's going to be a certain cost. So before we commit to doing it, we're going to need that figured out. Now, that may not be a 20-year story. I get that. It might be a one-year story. I hope it's a little longer than that. It might be a one-year with a three-year and a five-year, so you know why the one-year makes sense. That would be good enough. And if that's, I think what you're telling me is, well, that's not the Tom Cap. That's, I don't know, the, the first five-year implementation plan for the Tom Cap. I'm okay with that, but I don't think you make decisions about hiring people until you actually know what that thing looks like. Fair enough?
Well, um, so, so yes, I mean, if we are actually, so... But if you look at capital expenses, for example, whether installing solar or upgrading the, meaning, cooling, insulation, you name it, um, we would love to have those plans to give you that, those numbers for the projects that, that are... And some of them are just, you know, department needs and upcoming maintenance, projected maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, if, um, we would all love to have those numbers, absolutely. The sustainability coordinator that we are asking for, and we actually recommend that the town find a way to employ in some way, either as a consultant or as an employee. We see it in other towns that this is not necessarily a just sort of advisory role, but they're actually really tucking into the funds that are coming in at a very high rate, very quickly. And, you know, you can see in the federal legislation as well as the state funds. And I see other towns already applying. They're getting it aligned, even not.
So your, so your argument isn't really to have a sustainability coordinator. Your argument is really, we should hire a grant runner.
It's not a grant writer. It's also, a lot of these projects need to be scoped out and developed. It's, it's a process. It's not something, I mean, if you, if you have, if you have all these projects ready, the grant writing is the smallest project of it all, right? Is to, to actually go and work with the departments and say, "These are things that there could be money for." What, what is the condition of your buildings or of your whatever, you know, infrastructure? And make them ready so that the grant can be ready. And that is really urgent.
So...
And I can tell you, I'm, I'm working right now with the school on e-buses. It's taking up all my time, and, and it's my volunteer time, and that's also talking about Tom Cap. I have not touched Tom Cap since I've opened it for public comment because, you know, between the solar, the schools and the, and the, and the buses, it's just, you know, I'm constantly talking to people. And that clearly there is no capacity in the, in the administration or in the departments for this.
Perhaps, so let's just take e-buses. How did you come to the conclusion that that was a worthwhile thing for us to do?
Oh, if you look at the money that's coming down, so there was a, the deadline for the first grant application was on August 19th. We didn't apply. Uh, the next one is coming probably in January.
But, but, we're not buying buses.
No, we're not buying buses, but the buses can, so the towns have to apply and the money would be made available to the contractors. So there is a, you know, a legal way of doing that. So the contract is kind of applied, so the towns would have to apply for their contractors.
Because I thought that, I thought the webinar just took place, well, we're getting into details, okay. So in a little bit here, Hilly, I think we're, we're dealing with a chicken and an egg question, which is fair. And, and again, we, we hunt, we hired Susan McPhee, and for everything I can tell, she's done us a lot of good. So it's not, so it's, again, it's not categorically against doing something.
And she's generated a lot of money for the town.
Yeah. And so what would probably make sense is to see how to increment that up if the opportunity is there, as opposed to just hire somebody at a time that we probably shouldn't, we're not going to be hiring anybody.
We've had a discussion about it, but we're not ready to hire. But, you know, I, I, I do think that there needs to be some sort of person, staff person here or somebody available to the staff to go make this and work on developing the projects, like, you know, being on top of the deadlines for the applications, networking, other towns generate similar positions where you can partner with and that sort of thing. It takes a lot of time.
Okay. In fairness, you did put it as the...
It's a five to 10-year goal.
A five to 10-year goal. But my point is, I don't think that's a goal. I think the goal is what they're going to do.
I know, it's totally a lot of projects.
Yeah, so you got the feedback, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Now, the, the good news, if I go to your second, the second page is it printed out here. The, the preservation and protection of water resources, you, I think, added two at the bottom of that list, and I, I like both of them. I, I did a little wordsmithing, which is neither here nor there. And that one about private well compliance, I said, "Require private well compliance with drought restrictions imposed on town residents using town." It's just a wording issue, but I agree with you. That was a good ad.
I'm actually going to bring that up as a Warren article for this year. So you'll hear later inside. So I totally support that. I think that's something that we should be looking at pronto.
And I, you know, part of the discussions I keep hearing is that enforcement is really hard and that you have to react, so maybe that's a part of your...
No, I think it's...
Take a, take a crack at it. The next one down, I got rid of the word "regulate" partly because I don't think we have regulatory authority, and I just said "manage."
Well, yeah, manage. So, um, this is a very personal thing to do because I spent part of the summer working with the pesticide enforcement of the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources because they brought mine spray for ticks and mosquitoes. And even though it was not really those significant risk, and I...
What were they spraying, though?
For, so it was for mosquitoes and...
No, but what was, what was the substance?
My, my thing.
Okay, because, because our neighbors do stuff for ticks too, but it's eucalyptus oil.
Oh, yeah.
So it's kind of, you know, there's it. So when I read that, I read it slightly differently, rather regulating, manage it. Because some of this stuff, we don't spray, but...
Not really completely pesticides. I mean, you know, I'm talking about pesticides. And so the, the, what I took away from our discussions with the Chief Pesticide Inspector and the Environmental Chemist from the N D A R is that the, um, the way that pesticides are regulated early in agriculture and then after zones and spraying methods and all this laid out, they're not really suitable for built-up environments. And so, you know, when they spray and, you know, they, the... It's really unavoidable that neighboring properties get covered as well.
Mm-hmm.
And they actually asked us to, you know, the EPA to change the regulations. But I wonder if we could do something on bylaw, on the local level, to just make it more appropriate for the other areas?
So I, the only reason I didn't like regulate is I don't think we have the power to regulate. I put manage, just, but the way we can manage maybe is through a bylaws. And then the thing I added to it was to minimize adverse environmental impacts to the town, so...
Well, the reason I also had the non-tank products in there, I...
That's still in there. I just added that last part on.
Because I, I don't know, I heard from other towns that there is a big issue coming out with phosphate and water and how the towns can minimize that. I think there's some federal action maybe coming down, so I, I'm going to have to find out more about this. But I think it would be important to think about pesticides.
So bottom line is, I thought that was a good one, too. I liked it. So if I go down to the next one, open space protection, I liked, yeah. You added on that first one, "Develop a comprehensive plan for the ongoing maintenance and improvement of open spaces, including a plan to combat invasive species on public lands." I like that. And I said, "And private property." Doesn't do you any good to get rid of the invasives. I, you know, it's not that, it's not that we would control what people do on private property, but I think most people here in town, like, if, if you don't know... property, but I think most people here in town, like, if, if you don't know what a black swallow wart is, you don't know you have it.
It's an education process.
Huh?
It's an education process.
Yeah. And so, so I think that's why I would add it. It's not that we're going to...
This is black swallow wart weekend. Here's your plastic bag, and go and collect, please.
So I like that one. And then the, the very last one you had, there was adopt no mo may for...
That is.
Not, not, M O W. For, for, for public spaces, and, not that I, I just said, what's the broader goal here? Because I, I didn't, I'm just not that familiar with, I know about no shame November, but I don't know about no mo may.
I've never heard of no shade November or no mo, what is it?
It's, uh, if, when the, when the playoffs are, are going on.
So what is no mo may?
So it is actually an international movement for many years where wildflowers are allowed to flower, and then you mow in May. So it's really a pollinator supporter. And, and I've seen it like in the middle, you know, intermediate on, on streets, or sometimes on, you know, side, side areas, wherever it's appropriate. And sometimes, you know, the town will go and put on wildflower seeds, and actually have a pretty, you know, flower garden for the...
So where did, where did dandelions qualify for that?
I think you can...
Just curious.
Salad, if you pick a little bit.
So this is just one example, I mean, the other examples, it just literally, I sat down this afternoon and...
So your comment there just prompted me to say, there may be something else in there. When you said pollinators, I immediately went to neonicotinoids and said, maybe there's even something, there may be some things we can do around...
But can I tell you that, that thing where I talked to the chief pesticide inspector, told me that what they're spraying for the ticks and because, of course, most people for mosquitoes because they migrate, it is, it adheres to the surface and kills any insect that goes on contact, on contact for several weeks. So, you know, a few things about pollinators.
Boy, if we're pumping stuff like that in people's yards, you're probably right.
Right, and that people don't get educated about this right now. I'm sure people knew they wouldn't want it in their yards.
First of all...
Yes, don't get that eastern equine and cephalitis, fever, and a bunch of other things, too. So somebody has to do an intelligent weighing of the risks versus the whatever.
But this doesn't work against mosquitoes, because mosquitoes migrating, you know, you spray it on your yard, you have to...
They come to my yards, where they come to me.
Yeah.
And then your addition of wetlands and soils for the forest and wildlife management, I, I thought that was good. That, that's it. Those are my, so, the, my, my sort of critical comments were all on the first page. Everything else you did, I thought were good ads, so I was good with that.
Well, I, can I just encourage you to keep as much climate action in there as you can, because the primary to our wildlife...
I don't agree with that. But I, I just don't agree with that.
We don't have, you know, kind of, of course, like, large areas from the rest of the world do, and reducing habitat, but the habitat is changing so quickly because of the change in seasons and, and the, the sort of change in species competition.
I think we need to look at environmental issues on a broader spectrum, is why, is the main point. And that's not, it's not to take away from what you're trying to do. It's just that my concern is, there's a myopic view that's focused on one thing that is actually count, in some of the solutions, it's counterproductive to the environment. It's not, it's not protecting the environment, it's damaging the environment. When you put solar farms out and destroy fields, you're not being a net positive to the environment. So...
We're not doing this, we're just netting, netting, I mean, that's just a net here, and obviously net field, I don't think we're planning to do that.
Except for the landfill, which is a place that we can probably afford to do that, and we don't care.
Right.
The landfill, the, the cap landfill?
Yeah.
That, that's a different story.
We can't pay, pay services right now.
My, my only point is, it's a, there's a broader set of issues, I think, than just what this one particular focus is.
I just feel it shouldn't get watered down like that.
Well, anyway, you got my feedback. I, I like most of it, so it's not, it wasn't like a...
Because what you probably don't know about me is that I'm actually a planted soil person, but training, so these are really close to my heart, all of them, so I'm not trying to...
Good.
...pop them down, you know?
Okay.
That's my background.
Okay. The next, I think we're done, yes?
Yes, we're done.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take everything, I'll take my notes and try to draft. It'll still be kind of a crappy draft.
No, it's okay.
But at least we can kind of converge around that.
Well, we've made headway from one through five, without a doubt.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And Mo knows exactly what the next agenda item is, which is to vote to sign the annual contract with E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons, Inc. for trucking and hauling collected recycling from the transfer station as needed by the town.
This, this is, has become an annual contract with, for our recycling, for our single-stream recycling program that we have. We've had E.L. Harvey for quite a few years. They've been doing a great job with us, even during the holidays, when we need extra containers or we need them to assist us in removing the recycling. This is just recycling only, it's not, has anything to do with the solid waste. And so I just recommend that we, we go with E.L. Harvey for this, this one-year contract, and then we'll, we can reevaluate different, different options for the future.
Just two quick questions. I noticed it's one year. Have we done multiple years in the past?
So we've, we've done multiple years in the past, since COVID, and since the recycling changes with, with China and everything else, the prices have continuously gone higher and higher and higher. They're starting to level off, they're starting to, to come down a little bit. We've got the same price as we did this past year, we haven't, there's no increase. The only increase was a little bit in trucking because of continued increases in diesel fuel costs, not gasoline, but diesel fuel.
Okay.
But we have done that in the past, so we will, we are going to reevaluate to look at multiple-year contracts, to see what we can do to lower our prices in the future. Hopefully, things will, will stay level off or, or come down.
Okay. And then you answered the second part, which is, and I think I read it in the notes, that all those gentlemen's asking for is just, just a little bit...
Little bit of trucking.
For the gas.
We went up $10 on trucking, that's per load. That's not going to affect us too much. We have minimal loads per week, so that's a matter of $20, $30.
Okay. That's all ahead.
Pete? No questions? No questions? I tell you, the, I thought, appreciated that E.L. Harvey was as accommodating as they were to only put $10 on the trucking charge and go with everything else.
We have a good, we have a good relationship, but we are going to look at other opportunities and other areas to, like I said, to try to get multiple-year contracts at a, at a lower rate, if it's them. But, you know, we also have to look at, you know, the services that they provide. When you have other contractors, when you get a low, a low bid and a consortium, we're not, we're exempt from that, but we still want to look at the different pricing as we move forward. But we also have to look at the, what we get with, with the current contractor that we have, so there's a balance and act there.
All right.
Okay. I don't have any questions other than that one.
I'm good.
Motion?
I would move to sign the contract with E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Done. Happy holidays to you all.
All right, happy holidays. Thanks, Mo.
Take care.
Thanks, Mo.
Thanks for coming.
If we'd realized how long that townwide goals thing was going to go, we...
No, it's okay.
We would have put it in January. I mean, no, no.
I was actually going to suggest that we maybe think about prioritizing or figuring out in, in advance how we can accommodate people, like Gabby Harrison was here, and she just left.
Well, then I guess we can talk about who should we appoint to the safety committee. All right, that's the next item. We have four candidates for one position on the pedestrian and traffic safety advisory committee.
Yes.
Your thoughts?
So, I mean, they're all fantastic. It's like the school building committee, right? Like, I, I read that, all the resumes and letters, and the interest is awesome. But if I, if, if we only have one, the one person I would lean towards is Shane. And the reason I say that is the fact that he's from Medfield, moved on to Medfield, is involved with Newton from the fire perspective, is seeing kind of what's happening in another town from the safety perspective, coming back here as a Medfield resident. You know, my big thing is, I love to see people who haven't been involved, get involved. So I just think he's got a strong background and would be a good fit. He's over on Green Street, so I feel like we've got some different sections of town represented, but that is not sliding the other three people whatsoever, just if I had to pick one, that's what we'd pick.
So I was happy with all four of the people that stepped forward. I was, I was very pleased, actually, that we had so many people that were interested and willing to serve.
Right.
I happen to have talked to the police chief in the last day because of the citizen email that we got about the Tresca truck turnover and the street light on, on Hatters Hill. And I asked the chief if she had any problems with having more people on the safety committee, and she says she didn't. So based on that, I would recommend that we appoint all four of them to the safety committee.
I'm not prepared to do that, although you are. I, I, again, if, if we've gone through this a couple times, I don't expect the chief to tell you that, no, she doesn't want something. We have one position that we've talked about, and I, and I, for the, for the reasons I've already said, not in favor of just putting a big gang of people on a committee so they could all vote for recommendations that come to us that we then say, no. And we need, this, this needs to be a committee that thinks carefully about what the best answers are in this, and it requires a careful balancing of all the interests. It's not just a question of people wanting to go in one way and loading up a committee.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's who these people are. That's not my take on it at all.
I'm looking at their backgrounds, and I don't, I, I don't know why you need multiple people who sort of have similar backgrounds.
Well, and I think if we, we appoint one...
They're free to go to the meetings. It's a public, they're public meetings.
Well, that's what I was going to say. We appoint one to stay true to, like, my biggest concern, Pete, if we just start saying, you know what, if we start doing different committees, like school building committee, I could see somebody saying, well, why can't we quit, put more people on there? There's a reason why we have the number. So I don't see any issue with more people. I know Christine and I were talking earlier today, more people have actually reached out to want to be on this after the fact. They can go to any meeting, which is awesome. It's just that now we're limiting how many people are voting, which is important to, as we continue to build more committees and we set a number, I don't want the precedent to be, well, for the last one, you said you could bring four more. The other three people absolutely can go to any meeting and sit in, and if they have questions, I'm, I'm quite certain that their questions will be, we listen to, and if there's debate or if there's a concern with the vote coming up, again, those people will be listened to, but I just feel like it's our responsibility, if it's seven, it's seven, and it's, and we keep it that way from committee to committee, and not just have this, certain committees, we stay to our count, certain committees, we weaver, and, and just add whatever number comes forward. I just think it's, it sets the wrong precedent as we move forward. It's my only, just sitting here, hearing that.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a problem at all of setting a precedent, it's just that in this instance, we, we have a group of talented people, and we just want to make use of them. So that would be my preference, would be to appoint all four of them. If I, if I had to pick one, I would pick Gabby Harrison.
In my case, I think we're picking one, so, but again, that's not because they can't all go.
Right.
I went through, and I actually had a similar, I, I had Shane on top, and I had Phil next, and the reason, your rationale for Shane was largely mine. It's nice to have someone who's working in public safety, who also has kids, that is walking on our streets, and so kind of, he, he probably is, given that he's fire, he's probably seen accidents and things like that, so he understands the seriousness of it, the fact that he graduated recently, relatively recently, and wants to come back. It's good to see younger residents, and having somebody who was, grew up in Medfield, want to do it. He was my first choice. I like Phil, too, and it's because his background in running, to me, to me, the issue is, is a two, is a two-pronged issue. There's certainly car safety, but I've just been appalled at what I've seen of people out on the roads. People that just run with their back to the traffic on the right-hand side of the road, two feet out. And I, I can't, I can't personally do it, but there's incredible, I think there's more, I see more people doing that than actually being on the left-hand side of the road. And then everyone thought, I got a bike rider coming at me on the left-hand side of the road, and they, they don't know to be on the right-hand side of the road. I'm looking for some sense of somebody that would have that balance, and those two, for me at least, bump to the top, because I figure a guy who's coaching a cross-country team clearly has been dealing with this kind of stuff for, for a long time. So that, that was where I came, so I was neutral on either of those. If you like Shane the best, I'm, I'm prepared to support Shane.
Well, and I just think, and, and Phil is pleasant, Julie is south, so when we think of where people are around town, it's like, okay, we've got, we've got good representation, especially, you know, I think of Green Street with the activity coming and going from the Hinckley Swamp Pond.
Right, right.
There's a lot of people that come down from Minuteman that, that cut through, a little cut through, and so Green is a highly active road these days. So that's, yeah, but again, I, the other three, no knock to Gabby, no knock to, to Marie, I'm certainly, no knock to Phil, I've just, we only, we had one, and, and the other three, as you said, can certainly go and attend, so they're, they're not excluded.
So Pete, you're, you're still backing Gabby, I take it?
That's what I said, yeah, 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 no, I thought that she, and she's been interested for six months, and she's thought about it. I think she presented some materials that I thought were helpful in terms of her thinking, and, and the fact that she's thought about the issues already, so...
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I, I think Shane is a good, a good selection, I really do. And to, you just said what I was talking about earlier, it's like, he's, it's another young person in town that's willing to step up, which is so important.
Right.
And again, not knocking anyone else.
So anyway, I'm prepared to support Shane.
Okay. Do I second the motion?
You, you make the motion, I'll second it, and then I'll have a vote.
So I motion for pedestrian safety, pedestrian and traffic safety advisory committee appointment of Shane Maderos.
Okay, I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Pete, thank you for that.
Well, I think you're making the wrong decision. I think we should split all four of them, as I told you, but, you know, clearly you don't want to do that, so Shane's fine.
We don't.
For one.
And clearly, I think all three of us would like to see all three, all four...
All four show up, yes.
Show up and contribute.
Yeah, well, the way to do that is to elect them to the committee.
No.
You're not willing to do that.
Pete, you and I are both, we're not on the master, state hospital master planning committee, but we're both very active there. It actually had a lot of impact, so that's not the requirement. Okay. Next, vote to approve alcohol, common vittler, amusement, and motor vehicle sales renewals for calendar year 2023 is listed in the attached spreadsheet.
So moved. Mr. Chairman?
So my recommendation would be to read the alcohol licenses in the motor vehicle, the class two, and the others, you can reference the attachment. Those are both statutory and significant, so...
Hold on. Hold on. Give me a second.
They're in the agenda.
I should, I should make Pete read them in the motion.
I'm happy to read them. You want me to read them?
Yeah.
I move to approve the alcohol license renewals for Avenue Restaurant LLC, DBA Avenue, Tom Magoo, Inc., DBA Basil, Grand Mandarin, Inc., DBA Jings Garden Two, Kingsbury Club Medfield, Inc., Noon Hill Partners LLC, DBA Noon Hill Grill, Zebras Restaurant Group Limited, DBA Nosh &amp; Grog Provisions, Takara Group, Inc., DBA Takara. Keep calling.
So also the all-alcohol beverages.
You want to read the whole list? Marker?
Just the alcohol ones, but there, there's more alcohol ones, write downs, Farmer's Series Pouring Permit.
Oh, I see. I didn't understand, okay.[1691.83] Oh, I see. I didn't understand. Okay.
First for contributors. Bullards and for Package Store, all alcohol beverages, Bullards Market and Package Store, Inc., Medfield Package Store, Inc., Vet Package Store, Inc., Package Store and Wine, Wine and Malt licenses, Gulf Resources, Inc., DBA Medfield Commons, M. Carroll, Inc., DBA Medfield Wine Shop, Farmers Series Pouring Permit, Seventh Wave Brewing, Inc., Farthest Star LLC, DBA Farthest Star Saki. Can we roll in the license, the motor vehicle one?
Oh.
And include the class two motor vehicle sales license renewal for Keegan Auto Sales LLC.
Second.
And then the common VIX and amusement licenses as listed in the.
As listed on the.
We're going to do this with this one. All right.
All right.
As the council stated.
Second that motion?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay.
Next, vote to accept the community compact cabinets information technology grant program for $80,000.
So moved.
Actually, hold on. Just, any questions?
Uh, no. Talked to Christine earlier today.
You didn't have any questions. You're already ready with, I had, this is funding, I assume, for a contract?
Yes.
Okay. And Christine's the authorized signet, signature?
I am the authorized.
And that signature needs to be motor, uh, notarized?
Yep.
Notarized. And then who signs page 40? Is that also you?
I believe it is also me.
Down to page 40. Just want to make sure I know who's.
Let's see.
There. There we are. Keep going.
It's going to be at the end of this 40.
Slide page 40. It's the contractor authorized signatory.
I am going to be the authorized signatory.
Okay. So.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Uh, is a motion to accept it?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay.
Next, vote to authorize the chair to sign the Tree City USA application.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay. That's done.
Haven't they retired that to Medfield yet?
Uh, no citizen comment.
So fresh.
No consent, no, I assume no bill. Any citizen comment? No. Consent, no consent agenda. Meeting minutes. Need to ask you to defer them. I get to page four.
Yep, we can defer.
So defer those. And town administrator updates.
I have, actually, I have a few updates for you tonight. The first one is I want to say congratulations to Sarah Raposa, our town planner, who just celebrated her 10-year anniversary with the town of Medfield this week.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Um, you heard from Roberta, but congratulations to Sarah Hanafin, who was named our new COA director. And good luck to Roberta and her retirement. We're going to miss her. Congratulations to Katie Welper, who is going to be our new parks and recreation director, and she'll start next week, beginning of January.
Okay.
I would like to acknowledge and thank everyone for their patience as we continue to search for a full-time building commissioner. I know some of our residents have had to wait for inspections in the afternoon rather than their usual early morning. So I appreciate that patience as we, as we navigate that field. Gary, who is still working part-time for us, mentioned to me the other day that 50% of all current building commissioners are within five to seven years of retirement.
Wow.
So we're experiencing that problem right now. We haven't been able to find a certified building commissioner, and I think that is going to get harder and harder as we move forward. So. The holiday hours for the town hall and the transfer station have been posted on the website. Reminder that the annual town meeting warrant is set to close on January 10th. And we wish everyone a healthy, happy and holiday season. We are incredibly excited for 2023 and all of these new additions to the town.
Great. Thanks, Christine. Next meeting is January 10th, where the town meeting warrant will close, January 24th. Selectmen reports.
All righty. So holiday parade, nice turnout. A little crazy with the guy pulling in behind us in the Volvo, but that was crazy. The, I sat through, I think you guys did too, the MMA review on post.
Yep.
That was, though it was great until 12:41 and my internet just cut out at my house. And then there was a really nice gathering here on Friday for Roberta. That was, that was very, very nice. I was very happy for her. And then I have a question about, since the town meeting warrant closes January 10th, there is an article, there is a warrant article that I would like to post regarding restrictions to extending water restrictions to private wells during town mandated water restrictions. I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't be doing that when we are looking to conserve water and the way things are going and it's getting tighter and tighter. It's all coming from the same supply. So.
Yep. I absolutely agree with you.
Okay. All right. So.
Placeholder, man.
Placeholder. Okay. And then the other one was, and I think we already agreed on this, which was changing the work on Saturdays and Sundays from, uh.
Oh.
Starting at 8:00 a.m. and then wrapping up at 7:00 p.m. And then starting on Sundays at 9:00 and wrapping up at 7:00.
That's a noise ordinance.
The noise order, yes. So we can, okay.
I have, I have that down.
And then I have a question that my dentist asked me tonight about Medfield. So fluoride in the water, why does it Medfield put fluoride in the water?
I'm going to refer you to a number of meetings that have been held between the Board of Health and the Board of Water and Sewage, as well as some emails that have been going back and forth.
Is this something like 10 years ago to last year? Like what?
Goes way, way back.
No. So it goes way, way back.
It even predates me.
Okay. So it's, so it's something we could surface again, at least get discussion.
It did last year on the Board of Health and Water and Sewer Board have decided.
Highly politicized. Even now with communities that have had it for years, there's a little group that periodically challenges it.
Yeah.
On various grounds.
The Board of Health and the Water and Water and Sewer considered it last year. I can send you the emails from their discussions about it.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Because like she was saying, we're one of the few towns that, that doesn't have it. And it's a determination why some people won't move here because it's so important for little kids. It's got nothing to do, it doesn't help me and you. Our teeth are already formed. It's the young kids that are getting impacted negatively.
Yeah. I can, I can give you a few people to reach out to talk to who are very vocal about, and both sides.
Okay. But is that something we would ever put up to town vote? Or is that something that's already controlled by?
It's actually under the Board of Health control.
So it's under there. So it's not something somebody could bring forward as a citizen's petition to say we'd want the falling in the water?
You could.
You could.
You could.
Okay.
From what I can tell, I grew up in town that had fluoride. So I just took it as a given that that's something you should do. But I can tell you, there have been some debates on Facebook around this that there, to my surprise, the first time I saw them, there's people that have strong views.
Very strong.
About not wanting them, wanting fluoride.
Very strong.
To the point where it's like, maybe I've missed something here that is, you know, that's real. I just, I'm still here and I grew up with fluoride in the water. So it's apparently not.
Anybody that saw Dr. Strange, love.
So anyway, my point is, from a political standpoint, apparently it's not as, you know, amorphous and inconsequential an issue as I would have thought.
Okay.
Until I saw people shooting at each other. It's like, oh.
Well, I listen, I welcome the conversation. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And I think, let me just take one quick check on my, nope, they're not,
that is all my info. We are good.
Pete?
So I went to two programs. The MMA put on on Zoom, the Post one and the EVs, one that you mentioned that you had gone to as well, Gus. Congratulations to the memo on the town on the holiday parade. It's fun to see all the scouts out. The, let's see, Medfield Foundation had a tour of the grist mill on Saturday because they're a, a Medfield Foundation initiative. And it was fascinating. Dick Judge actually told us that some of the beams in that building are from 1691, I think he said. It's an incredibly old commercial structure. There you go. Commercial property for you.
Yeah. Maybe we rezone the grist mill.
So that's it.
Maybe we could turn it into a residence. Uh, let's see. I already talked about the holiday parade. That's always fun. Although the group of people that were across North Street, I, I just thought it was a massive crowd that had turned out in the center of town. And for some reason, all had decided to be on one side of the road. And then after the fact, I realized they were doing it to literally form a human chain to prevent cars from North Street from trying to turn out onto Main Street, which was.
It's crazy that people do that. I know.
Which people had done, apparently. So that's why they were blocking it.
Well, we witnessed it, right? I mean, the guy pulled right in behind us on Pounce Street. Blew my mind. I don't know how anyone could do that when you see little girls about to enter the street and just drives right in. I don't get it.
Used to just be funeral processions and now it's, it's the holiday parades. Anyway, as Eileen and Pete both mentioned, the MMA has had a couple of good webinars this last month. So I did attend both the EV webinar, which I've already talked about, the Post webinar. One thing that I took away from the Post webinar, and I almost put a question in, and I didn't, but then somebody else asked it. Post has, it was a very useful webinar to basically just lay out how the whole Post is structured and how it works. They have a division of standards, which strangely cannot be headed up. So the division of standards is the group that would actually review police actions for appropriateness.
Mm-hmm.
The person heading up that division cannot have law enforcement experience and the people staffing it can't have law enforcement experience. They, or they can't have come out of law enforcement. So as I heard all that, I kind of was saying, well, how does that work when, if you're a police officer and you're involved in a dicey situation and you know what you do is going to be second guessed by a division of standards and nobody in that division has law enforcement experience? How would I feel about that? And I, you know, I wouldn't feel really good about it. So somebody asked, the way they asked the question was, how do the people, given that they don't have law enforcement experience, how do the people in this division get trained to know how to evaluate the situations that they're going to be passing judgment on? And there were two people that were presenting. One of them was a police chief from out, a little farther west of here. And his answer was not direct, but it was very revealing because he basically said, yeah, that's still getting worked out. So that's cause for concern if you have faith in your police. And I, let's hope they work it out because that didn't give me a warm and fuzzy feeling when I heard that. On a brighter note, the Trinity and the town departments had a meeting last week. I thought the meeting went very well. Trinity was presenting their, their initial plans to all the department heads to see if there were any issues that came up. And I thought it was a great meeting, a lot of good discussion. To the point about the gun range, by the end of that meeting, I came away with simply a reinforced notion that the gun range issue is a huge issue for Trinity.
The banks, actually, the loan institutions.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure that we're going to have to lean on our legislative leadership to make sure that they don't do anything to get this project derailed because the state can't figure out what to do with the gun range. That's, that's going to get, that's going to get figured out. And it's probably got to be figured out this year between, or between now and the summer.
Sure.
And I say that based on the impression I came away with in this conversation about where some of the leaders of this project at Trinity are putting all their emphasis right now. They have to get an answer to that question before they can proceed with some of the things I think that they need to do for the detailed design because that will kill the project if it doesn't get taken care of. And the, oh, Hilli's gone. The, the information sheet that we had on the Norfolk County mosquito control, editorial comment. Their comments about having to get rid of their vehicles is a classic example of where one issue that if it's pursued too blindly creates problems in other areas, that's a real problem. And so this, if you haven't read the information sheet on that, to see what their situation is, they're being forced into a situation that they shouldn't be forced into, as far as I can tell based on what they wrote. Having to get rid of vehicles that they need because of the way people are applying mileage standards and environmental analysis to vehicles that are only used seasonally. So that, I think that was, that's it. That's all I have. With that, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Hope everyone has.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Happy holidays.